This meeting is being recorded via FATV. And I'm gonna start the meeting with a little countdown of the gavel. Five, four, three, two, one. Here we go, Dan. Our first item of this evening are approval not required plans underneath A and R provisions. And the first item we have. A and R is 105 to 121 John Fitch Highway.
You want to have Dan, so you can share your screen?
Sure. I can bring this up on the screen.
At the bottom middle, you have a share screen button.
Oh.
Just press the share screen button. And just for the board members, we're all somewhat new to this and the audience. We're back in person for the first time in 24 something months. If board members, if you do speak, make sure you speak into the microphone, otherwise it might not pick it up.
That's a good point. And just so that everybody is aware too, we do also have one board member who is attending virtually.
Okay.
Alex Bez. So, okay, here we have.
So for the record, Bill Hannigan with Hannigan Engineering. This project is the proposed Dunkin' Donuts drive-through facility. And the final part was to adjust the lot lines to accommodate that construction. So 121 is a parcel of land that's gonna be conveyed from lot, the number 121 site to the 105 site to create one lot for the entire building and site product to be constructed. That's the purpose of the plan.
Do any board members have any questions regarding?
No, so it's just simply incorporating parcel A into 1B?
Correct.
Nope, fine with it. It's probably easier if we still just authorize you to sign it instead of all getting up. What do you want to do?
Your choice. I mean, I think that would be handy if, say, there were only three board members here and three virtually.
One virtual, yeah.
And then we'd have to chase one person down.
I'll make a motion to authorize Mike to sign the A and R.
Second, a motion's been made with the second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed?
Thank you.
There we go.
Thanks, Bill.
The next one. And I'm trying to make sure.
Oh, Madam Chair, I had mentioned to Paul, but we did have an additional A and R submitted at like four o'clock this afternoon, but it's pretty simple. I can, if I have the ability to share my screen, I can.
Yeah, you should have the same, after we're done with this one, you should have a share screen button in the bottom middle. But don't press it yet, because Paul will do this one and then we'll, I'll help you once we get to it.
We have John Fitch.
Romano.
Yep, we have 612 to 640 South Street. Get this up here.
The gist of this, board members, is this is Romano's greenhouse on South Street, on the corner of Romano Ave and South Street. But the existing property line, Doug helped me out a little bit, I think runs between the greenhouse
Here.
to the right and the dwelling to the left. The existing property line. But this, the purpose of this is to incorporate, that's a greenhouse, Doug, right?
Yeah, it's a temporary, like a plastic structure in the back. Adding that to the greenhouse property. The original line's like four feet out of that toward the greenhouse.
And running kind of up and to the right, like directly to the east, right? So now Lot 2 will incorporate all of the greenhouse property. And Lot, it says Lot 1, right? Is just the dwelling.
So this is.
So it's a re-subdivision, just switching a property line.
The paper copy must be signed by Bruce Kinsman, right? I noticed this one's not. That's all the only reason why I say that. Just wanted to make sure it's stamped and signed before you sign it. Okay.
That's all set.
Perfect. I have no problem with it, no questions.
All right, any of the board member have any questions on this A and R?
Make a motion to authorize Mike to sign the A and R.
Motion's been made with the second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed? Okay.
And then actually, Paul, it might be quicker if I just email you when I got from the surveyor.
I have my email open, if you want to send it to me.
Sorry, looking for it. It was the former Dufour's RV place in Chirwash on John Fitch. Just splitting that into two. And.
What's the address?
650.
650, okay.
John Fitch.
Yeah, that's a sizable parcel.
Are you trying to settle up on yours or are you trying to email it?
I'm trying to find it on mine.
Okay.
And email it. No, you can skip over and we can always come back. I think the surveyor is here, his name is Chris McNary. Dan, if you see him.
Oh, on virtual?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yes, you may want to mention, is it, is this on this platform, is it raise your hand or is it?
So I do have Mr. Martinez with his hand raised. I don't know what that's about. Do you want, that might be on.
Recording stopped.
147 Daniels.
Okay, we'll get to you, Mr. Martinez, when we're at that point.
Oops, did I hit the wrong button?
Chris McNary, I unmuted you. I don't know if, were you still looking for that, Mike? Or did you want to skip over? I'd rather get it done now.
It came in about like six.
Recording in progress.
Well, that's good to know.
I might have hit the.
Oh, you hit it?
I was trying to tab down at the bottom and I think I'm hitting too many buttons.
Chris, can you hear us? Can you, looks like his microphone's unmuted, I unmuted him.
Really, you can skip over. Once I figure it out, we can come back to Chris.
Chris, we'll come back to you.
All right, let's see if we can get through our minor site plan section. So in front of us this evening, we have a few minor site plans and/or extension requests. The first one, though, we had, was proposed for an extension for a site plan approval for a large-scale solar array at Ashburnham Street for Mad River Solar. Unfortunately, it was determined that this application cannot receive an extension at this time because of the zoning ordinance change that occurred in September. And a special permit application is going to have to be submitted.
If it's helpful, I can read, I have it up. I can read Mark Barbadoro's determination.
So the planning board would receive a special permit application and notices would go out to all butters within at least 300 feet regarding the hearing. Whenever they decide to submit that application, whether it's next month or the month after. We do have our scheduled meetings to the last Tuesday of the month.
So to the neighbors that are here, just so you understand, it's kind of a procedural thing. It was a site plan before. We changed our zoning ordinance in September because, and I'm gonna read it in one second, but our zoning enforcement officer basically said, in order to follow the proper procedure, they now have to apply for a special permit. So let me read to you what they wrote. Zero Ashburnham Street. Site plan approval is not protection against a zoning change, nor is a building permit after 180 days of non-work. When the city of Pittsburgh changes its zoning, the effective date is when the mayor signs it. And after that, any building permit applied for must follow the new rules. So that's from Mark Barbadoro, our building commissioner. So basically, they'll have to apply, Mad River will have to apply for a special permit and we'll have to go through the process again to approve them. So if anyone was here to speak on that, we'll hear that when they're ready to apply for a special permit at a future meeting.
You're always welcome to stay for our meetings, this one.
Mike, you said Attorney Barrett, oh, here we go. Attorney Barrett, you're unmuted. Let me see if I can ask to unmute. So Attorney Barrett, if you just click your microphone button or whatever the heck you have on that side. I am muted you on our side.
All right. Okay, Paul, Madam Chairwoman?
Yes.
John Barrett. Yeah, thank you. I understand the building commissioner Barbadoro's determination and I certainly agree with it. The only question I had on behalf of Mad River was whether or not, under the new ordinance, I wasn't sure, the site, the special permit process totally replaces the site plan approval? Or if there is a concurrent site plan approval process as well?
Site, so when you submit the special permit, you would submit the site plan for approval as well? That's concurrent with the special permit. So it's not the existing site plan? You'd have to resubmit it?
Would have to resubmit the site plan?
Yes.
I guess I was gonna ask if it's possible to extend your site plan approval with modifications based on the Conservation Commission rulings. Subject, of course, to getting a special permit since, you know, based on Mr. Barbadoro's determination, we will need to get the special permit. But I just didn't, I was hoping that if we don't have to do another site plan, because all these costs are adding up.
Well, you can submit the existing site plan. I'm just saying.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be new, it's just that you have to submit the site plan for reapproval.
Okay.
It can all be done under the package of the special permit. We just need a plan to look at.
Right, okay, okay. And then, so the site plan is, basically, is a special permit for the site plan approval is what the board would be dealing with?
A new, yes, a special permit which wasn't necessary before is now necessary.
It is now, right.
And you would submit the site plan concurrently with that. You can still exist, I mean, submit what you had previously submitted for a site plan with the special permit.
Okay, all right. Madam Chairwoman, thank you, Mr. Fontaine. I guess if I could, just one other question. We hope to file that application soon. I'm just, was wondering, maybe Mr. Howard knows when we'd need to file it in order to be on your agenda for May?
I would say two weeks prior, 10 days to two weeks prior, right?
More than that, because it has to be advertised within 14 days prior.
Oh, it has, right.
You have to submit it prior to that to be advertised for the.
Mike, do you have a date for him? When he would need to have it in for your advertisement for the next meeting?
Well, if it's the same site plan as we already have, John, I think just resubmit that. It would be the 24th, so.
Well, and the special permit application.
Right.
Right. Fill out the special permit application, we'll provide a new list of butters and arrange for publication. As long as you get the application to us, John, by, say, next week or 10 days. I mean, we already know who the applicant is and what the interest of the property is, so.
Okay.
We're not recreating the wheel.
It still has to go through, and it will go through all the department reviews as well for comment.
Yeah.
Right, right. Okay, we'll try to get that out to you folks as soon as possible. And just to assure the folks that, from the neighborhood, you know, we are still working on it. And we were hoping that, you know, this hurdle would be a little bit easier, but understand why we have some additional obligations here and we will try to pursue them as quickly as we can. I don't know if Mr. Denuffel, Tom Denuffel is here, but I think he was gonna try to join us, but I don't know if he has anything to add.
Well, thank you, Attorney Barrett.
Do you see Tom or John?
Oh, yes, I do, yes. So, well, I would say, I mean, obviously, if someone has something pertinent, the appropriate time probably will be our next meeting, because we're not making any decisions tonight anyway.
Or taking comment.
What?
Or taking any public comment.
I was gonna say, it's not a public hearing either way. So if the neighbors certainly want to put their thoughts on a paper, they're welcome to email us ahead of time so that we can have an idea of what the, you know, outstanding circumstances are, obviously. Yeah. I'm familiar with the background from the tree cutting, and is that what we're talking about? Yeah, I'm familiar with all that and I did a sidewalk show after that happened too. So we'll pay attention to that as well. But Mike can try and resubmit, I suppose, can forward us whatever prior communications we had at some point.
Sure. In addition to what the joyous.
And you guys will, obviously, everyone will have an opportunity to speak at our next meeting when they're officially in front of us. And for the people that are virtual for this, we have about 12 attendees who are virtual. We're using a new platform for our board. Over the last two years, we've been using a different one, so we're getting used to this, but it works the same as our other meetings. If you're virtual and you have a question on any particular item, use the raise your hand function and I'll try to get to you as we get to those points in each hearing. Thank you, Attorney Barrett.
Thank you.
So the next item on our agenda, we did have a minor site plan submitted for 14 Highland Ave for a parking plan for a two-family. However, Paul, if you'd read.
Yeah.
Further information we received from the building.
I just had one question about the last one. We don't have to do anything administratively for the extension just because they're asking for an extension? There's nothing we have to do that would constructively do anything?
Well, I guess.
Or do we just vote to deny the extension?
To sort of tie a bow on it, the board could make a motion and a vote to deny the requested extension because they don't have the ability to.
Yeah.
Because of the change in the ordinance.
I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Effective last fall.
Second, with, a motion's been made with the second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? I heard you, Alex, too. I can hear your voice.
All right, sorry, I just wanted to clean that up before we went on.
So the chair and vice chair know, the applicant, Paul, from 14 Highland and his architect are here. And you, sorry, so go ahead. This was kind of late breaking news.
Can you, you guys, can you raise your hand? Yeah, okay.
Yes.
It's okay.
We got some additional information from the building commissioner because it cannot be submitted as a minor site plan. It's actually a special permit is required with the site plan. So it needs to be submitted for a formal public hearing.
I'll read you again. He had given us a summary of a couple items that were, they're problematic in how they ended up on our agenda. And so Commissioner Barbadoro said, 14 Highland Street is in downtown Business District. The use as a single family is lawfully pre-existing non-conforming because it lacked the required special permit. And the use has been discontinued for more than two years. Any reuse of this property as a single family, two-family, three-family, or multifamily would require a special permit pursuant to Table 183 313. So what he's saying is that the avenue for approval isn't a site plan review, which is what you're here for, which is basically just parking and review of the site. It's for creation of the use because it's not been used for so long.
I do have an open permit on the building that is then we have. I actually was in a meeting to try to get approved a year from last year, actually.
As a single family, but because your request, but because this request is for adding another unit, another residential unit to make it a two-family, underneath the table of principal uses, a special permit is required for that request.
The gist of, the gist of his comment is it's outside of our board's control. It's something that, if, you know, again, if you have a question, you should talk to the building commissioner and iron it out. It's, he's telling us it needs to be a special permit. So he's our, he's our guide, he gives us guidelines for how we handle things. So what he's saying is we cannot approve it as a site plan, so.
It was a special permit. The $300 fee that was paid for last year, it was for a special permit.
For last year, but it was also formally withdrawn. So you withdrew the special permit for last year. This is a new application, a new special permit.
Yes, when I wanted to see it, I talked to Mark and gave him the, I filled out a new form of intent. It needed to be denied, so that's what he did. And I went to Michael there and says, I don't need to pay for the fee again for the special permit so I can get it made. That's what I thought this was.
Mike, do you have the form of intent?
So.
Or was it in, I didn't even look.
Unfortunately, even if it was, we can't, we cannot hear it.
No, I know, I'm just curious if he wrote something different in the form of intent, because that would be. Can you bring it up to me? I just want to take a look at it. And again, Paul is right, either way, there's nothing we can do, because it wasn't advertised as a special permit, which means we have to advertise it differently for a special permit so that a butters can be notified and can come here. So at that point, if that's the case, you know, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll give it right back to you when we're done.
Paul, I want to quickly interrupt.
Yeah.
I want to make a suggestion. I think that folks should step up to the microphone for recording purposes.
Yes, absolutely.
When speaking, if it's your turn, please report to the microphone so that we can have better recording and audio.
Thank you very much. I completely forgot, thank you. Yeah, so, yeah, so this form of intent is for a single-family home. It even says it on it. Add on a single-family residence per new, new front entryway stair. Rehab, completely existing carriage house, owner's office, bath, construction, storage on main level, two-bedroom, parking for four-car runoff. It doesn't say anything about a two-family on that.
Because the main building itself, I have a permit open for that, that's being rehabbed. And that's the carriage house that's in the back, which I want to renovate it, I don't want it to fall down. So that's, that's what I started was doing for, applying for a two-family.
Understand that.
Under special permit conditions.
That you can apply for a two-family underneath a special permit for the table. Just, that's not unfortunately what happened with the procedure or communication, so.
I guess it got mixed up with last year.
It could have been.
What it sounds like is Commissioner Barbadoro might, there might be a disconnect with what was.
I did talk to him in person. I even showed him everything.
He wrote this late yesterday, so I don't know, I mean, we can't get any fresher than the information he gave us. So I mean, you could try and talk to him and see if maybe he, there's something that was a disconnect that maybe he's not reading it right, or maybe you're not understanding what he's trying to say. The answer is, we can't solve it here.
Yeah, I understand.
That's unfortunate, I mean.
I would say the next step was, please return to the building commissioner's office and get a new zoning determination that says what you need to do, which would say get the special permit and site plan review.
What I was hoping was that letter, somewhere in that packet, would have been his zoning determination, which says, this is what you need to do to do what you're doing, which is what he, what he probably gave you a year ago. But that was for something different than what we're doing today, so.
Yeah, because then it was, I draw the plans myself, I didn't have a site plan or parking, any of that. And all of you actually recommended me to come up with.
FYI.
Plans, which why I have now.
Yeah.
But then it would take me, because you guys had just started doing the meetings and it was taking forever at the time. I said, I can't do it. And now it's been a year later, I decided to do it, so.
I want to, I do want to bring to your attention that the site, the site plan that you would submit with the special permit application, make sure that it's signed off by an engineer on the site, on the site plan with the parking.
Needs to be, okay.
Yes. Because it needs to be to scale as well, because it wasn't, I'm just saying, the initial one was a little rough.
Yeah.
We need to know that.
Charles does it by hand.
We need landscaping on there, everything, so.
You got to show that everything fits, because the only thing, the thing we look at, aside from the special permit, is what you draw on paper is what happens in real life. So you need to make sure that it's done, you know, done to scale and done accurately.
Also, if you've got additional uses, you have to show parking for that as well. So it's not just, I need four spaces, how many spaces did the entire use need?
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so that's what you also need to do. Just want to bring those points out to you, so.
Yeah, all right.
Okay, you can.
So, yeah, you can have that back. So what we were just saying was because of what we've been told from Commissioner Barbadoro, the.
We'll ask him to draw.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
So, two things, since it was submitted as a minor site plan, you paid an additional fee, to speak, for that site plan. You can just formally withdraw it this evening, so that probably that fee could be used towards the special permit application, or the board would have to deny it for administrative purposes at this time.
All right.
So if you would like to formally withdraw it, we'll take that.
Yeah, I guess I would draw it and I'll start over again as a special permit application.
All right. So the applicant's requested to withdraw. I'll make a motion to withdraw the site plan. Okay, the motion's been made.
Second.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna say, and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed? Okay, great.
Would the board be amenable to transferring the $300 that was already paid?
Yes, absolutely. You shouldn't have to pay another fee, absolutely.
Unless it's right, as long as it's the same fee.
Yep, yep. I do want to, Peter, can you hear us? Can you, can we see if we can hear you?
I can, yes.
Fantastic, all right. Tom said there were some problems, I want to make sure we can hear you. All right, thank you.
Our next minor site plan this evening is for 83 to 85 and Zero Marshall for AG Dreamflip, with a parking plan for a reinstated three-family, was continued from our March 22nd meeting.
Hey, guys, how's it going?
You remember, or you don't, you remember his voice, but this is Nicholas.
Yes, hey, how's it going, guys?
It's nice to see everybody.
Yeah, so first thing, after the last meeting, the first suggestion was to clean up the location. So we hired a couple guys to go out there and clean it. We filled the full dumpster, cleaned everything out on both of the lots. So that was the first thing we did. Second of all, we did have to continue it from last, I did skip a meeting because it did take a while for Mayor Mack Engineering to get me a new plan, which is finally in. I sent it over to Mike and there is a slight change. So where you see Lot 69 that abuts Stephen Bergeron's property, there wasn't existing three spaces there. Our idea was to put two more spaces there with the retaining wall. You guys wanted me to reach out to DPW. I did. Ryan went out there from engineering a couple times with me. And we came to the conclusion that where there is a grade going down, there is no major fill needed. It's just, we have the 18 feet going back that doesn't go into the grade. So we can just stick a retaining wall there that will be under four feet. It does not need to be engineered. We can just put up something aesthetically pleasing to create a barrier there. There's already something there, but we're gonna demo it out and put something there. Kind of just, you know, having figured out what material we're gonna use, or if we're gonna use a guard rail or wood, but it is something that's gonna be aesthetically pleasing there. And the other change is that we actually reached out to Stephen and we came to an agreement that we're gonna actually pave his side as well. So we're gonna make uniform 10 spots there. Five will belong to 83, 85 Marshall and the other five will belong to Stephen's property. And it's just for a purpose of making it aesthetically pleasing. So we're gonna do 10 uniform spots there with the retaining wall. And across the street, we're gonna use our sixth spot. So again, I had Ryan go out there. I don't know if, Mike, do you have a picture of what I sent you?
You resent, yeah, I'm just looking at it now.
Got you. It's not too, the picture's not very aesthetically pleasing, because I did it on the computer, but we're gonna cut down a tree. And that's gonna create, once Mike can get it up there on the other side, it's gonna also create another uniform parking with the property that abuts 63, 65 Marshall Street on the other side. They already have sort of a retaining wall there. We're gonna blow out the tree and just create another uniform spot there. So, and we have the space.
Looking at that plan, which one, 63, 65?
Yeah, correct.
Or left?
Right here?
Right there.
But you're gonna put it to the, which direction?
So the picture would help. It's my fault, I didn't send it to Mike until today, but.
Yeah, I'm trying, now I'm looking at Paul's screen and I can't get out.
Just hit escape.
Essentially, we have the room to put a spot there. You know, nine by 18 is good, but again, to make it aesthetically pleasing, we're just gonna continue the wall that was created by the neighbor and just do the same thing that the neighbor did there. And that'll probably create another two parking spots, but you know, whatever extra is better. And that will get us to the six that we need.
So I did want to bring up, though, that you need to also have a three-foot setback from the sidewalk and property line. So it's more than 18 feet.
I'm sorry?
It's 21, would be 21 feet. You need a three-foot setback.
Yeah, we have plenty of room there. I mean, I'm just saying that the mention of the parking is nine by 18, but there's plenty of room going up. I mean, we can bring the retaining wall to the same level as the neighbor and that gives us plenty of room and it gives us, you know, they already have these pre-made blocks out on the road that are measuring, I think, five feet anyways.
Are you talking zero or are you talking?
I'm talking, I'm talking zero is where we're doing the five, but we're joining it with Stephen Bergeron, that would be 10. And across the street on 83, 85, that's where we're gonna do one spot. We have plenty of room there after blowing out the tree to, you know, to do 30 feet.
So that, so you can meet the three-foot setbacks for that.
Yes, correct.
But you also have to meet the three-foot setbacks on the zero property. You only have 18, you go right to the property line.
Yeah, but the thing, so, no, so the way it is visually is the 18 feet. City of Pittsburgh already has a cement block there, like already built. I don't know how to explain it, but they already have that clearance. So where we start the 18 feet.[1790.11] So where we start the 18 feet, going back, we have that 18 feet, DPW measured, and we already have.
But you need three feet from the set, from that as well.
We do have it.
So you have 21 feet from that, from that. Well, that's not what the show is, is what the...
Well, the parking itself is 18, but the thing is that what's already created there is city property that's already three feet.
So you need three feet from the city property plus your 18 feet, because any hangovers, you can't beat any hangovers whatsoever onto the sidewalk.
Yeah, we have that. Like I said, Ryan went out there and measured everything out. Now, obviously, it's not like, he can't draw any lines for me, but it's...
Hope's too. Commissioner Erickson's on the call.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't, Nick, I don't know if you're aware of this property, or if you'd like to speak, but...
And I have the photo up on mine, too, now.
What's that?
I have the photo that Nick sent this afternoon up on my laptop.
So hit the share screen button, bottom middle.
But that is for the other side.
Oh, that might just be Paula and I, I don't know.
Maybe I have to unshare.
Even on lot zero, though, I mean, I wish I had a visual to show you, I guess, I don't know if he has, I think he took pictures there last time, but the, the three-foot clearance from the road is already created. Starting from the end of there back, we have 18 feet. So there's 21 feet total before the road.
I know, it's not before the road, it's before the sidewalk.
Before the sidewalk.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, we have that, yeah.
You can't count the sidewalk in the three feet. You have the sidewalk, then you have three feet, and then you start your...
There's no sidewalk there, though.
It's the edge, okay.
Yeah, the edge, and it's, and it's that measure.
Right, three, so, okay, so three feet from...
So there's the road, then there's a three-foot cement barrier that the city put down there.
It's a pad to drive over.
Correct, and then from there, you have 18 feet back.
So it's not a barrier, it's the...
It's not a barrier, no.
It's the pad to drive over.
Correct.
I'll show you, actually, I can show you this now while I'm waiting for Mike.
Thank you.
Let me start with this.
Brian even mentioned, he's like, "If that wouldn't have been there, that, you know, you would have to create that clearance." Correct, exactly, yes.
So that is a sidewalk. That's a sidewalk.
Right.
So it's three feet from the sidewalk.
From, from here, it's supposed to be three feet off of here to make sure that you're not impeding the edge of the sidewalk. That's, that's, that's the way our code reads property lines, and from the, from the front side and rear property line, it's supposed to be three feet from there. Can, does it, does it particularly cause an issue if you go three feet further back that way?
No, not really, I mean...
Does it make the wall substantially larger than four feet if you go three more feet back?
No.
Okay, well, I mean, if you can do it, then...
I mean, all it is, is if you have to do any fill or anything, I mean, obviously you have space to do it. We're just saying that you need to go further back.
Yeah, that's, well, that's exactly why I had Ryan go out there. That was the concern after last meeting that you guys brought up. And that's who you guys asked to go out there, was DPW, to make sure that it wasn't going to need substantial filling. And I believe Mike reached out to Ryan to confirm that we're in the clear as far as that goes.
Ryan, after he came back, yeah.
There was no, there was no attachment. I have the email, no attachment.
Oh, it's further down in the file.
Yeah, no, I went all the way down.
So I, I mean, I went through the channel that you guys requested that I go to in order to get that approval, and then I even had Michael Harry reach out to confirm it, so that it wasn't coming from me. Mike can, you know, confirm it himself, that we had enough room, yeah.
I appreciate you did that. Nick, are you there? Are you on?
Yes, can you, excuse me, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can, thanks.
Great, so I haven't been involved with this project. I'm not sure that Ryan was given the appropriate context, but I can easily check with him tomorrow to see what he measured out there in the field and see if there's 21 feet or 18 feet. And if we need 21 feet, if, if that's going to require any substantial filling, and, and I can let Mike know.
I mean, my, my, my suggestion is quite simply, I appreciate the fact that the applicant went the extra steps, and... And Nick, did that sound like an accurate statement, that if the wall's only four feet, it doesn't have to be an engineered retaining wall?
I, I disagree with that. I think if it's over, I want to say, three feet, maybe four feet, then it needs to be engineered, but it needs to be measured from the bottom of the footing of the wall to the top of the wall, not necessarily the ground surface elevation to the top of the wall.
Okay.
Again, I mean, that was, that was verbatim coming from Ryan.
He's, this is Ryan's boss.
Gotcha.
But, but that's fine. So my, my suggestion, I do appreciate that you went to the DPW, and I think it, I think it's, you know, you did your due diligence trying to figure that out. I, I, I certainly agree with what Paula said, that, you know, usually we hear a statement along the lines of, you know, if there's a retaining wall, it needs to be engineered. If that's the case, I have no problem with, with leaving this in the hands of DPW, because I know Nick, especially now, is aware of this. Basically saying, you know, if, if DPW is confident that you can get the 21, and if the wall needs to be engineered, they will tell you how to do that. I don't have a problem with that.
Would also say, we'd probably need a guard rail there as well in that case.
Correct, yeah, I mean, that's a given, yeah, absolutely, we'll definitely do that, because it's a significant grade going down, so I mean, that was part of the agreement. The plans are depicting a retaining wall there of some sort. I just haven't really decided what material it's going to be yet. That's something, obviously, I was open to suggestions from you guys as well, because I don't want to suggest something, say, "Well, it needs to be this." I mean, last meeting, it was just, it needs to be aesthetically pleasing, so, you know, we'll make it look beautiful. We've already cleaned everything up. It was a mess back there. We took a dumpster full of stuff, so, you know, we're doing our best to clean it up.
With the retaining wall, my suggestion is whatever DPW thinks is necessary, whether that be precast block, or whatever, you know, whatever they think is necessary, and that you think will beautify your property, you know. I, I think, I don't have a problem with that. The plan does say a proposed retaining wall. Commissioner Erickson is, you know, knows about this now, so I think if it needs to be engineered, the DPW will certainly let, let you guys know that.
I don't have a problem with where, what material it is, or if it needs to be engineered or not. Again, I'm just, I went through the channel that you guys said, and I'm bringing you guys the information that was brought to me by DPW. I understand you have Ryan's boss on the line. I just relied on Ryan's information, and he said it could be any sort of even metal guard rail. Of course, like, you know, it's going to look good. Place already looks a lot better than it was. Place was a dump, so, you know, we cleaned out a full dumpster full of trash, and I did everything you guys asked in hopes to get this moving.
So would you like to see a metal guard rail or a wooden guard rail?
I would just say guard rail, yeah. You can let, let the applicant figure. Obviously, you know, just, just make sure it's durable and...
We don't like, I know, we'd perfectly, if you're doing, we don't like to see chain link fences. If you have to have anything regarding that, then it needs to be like, at least black vinyl coated or something to that degree in order to...
And there will be no fencing. Like I said, we, right now it has wood, big wooden panel, not panels, a big wooden barriers there, but they're pretty beat up, so, you know, the idea was to blow those out and put something pretty there. And part of the thing was, you know, you guys asked for aesthetically pleasing, so I even went above and beyond to reach out to the neighbors. We didn't need to continue the 10 spaces over to Steve Bergeron's property, but we thought it would look a lot nicer that way, and we're encountering 80% of that cost to do that, just to make it look uniform. You know, I could definitely save money by doing five spots and just forgetting the other five, but why not? You know, we got on the same page, and I think it's going to look really nice. And we did the same thing across the street. We don't need the space, but we're going to blow out the tree and make a uniform wall with the other one, just to make it look nice. I mean, I think it, it's an eyesore right now, and it's going to look 100 times better.
We, we, any, it'll be much improved. So we need a resubmission of the site plan showing the setbacks and the additional three feet for the parking spaces. And then whatever DPW is going to ask for regarding, information regarding the retaining wall, permits for that.
Okay, so I mean, it's, the only reason, it's a little disappointing, just because, I mean, I'm not trying to pin it on Mike, but I sent him over that, I said, "How's it look?" And, you know, and...
Mike can't make a board decision, but let me just, let me just, hold on one second. Let me try and bridge the gap here. I, I am, I am okay with making determination that says, we can, we will sign off on the site plan. If you provide it to Mike, Mike can share with the board, and, and we can tonight, basically make a, make a vote that says, "It's fine, as soon as you provide it to him, show it to him, he shows it to us and it looks good, so you don't have to come back to another meeting." You don't have to wait for that. So we can say, you know, show the guy we're on the plan, the parking space is three feet from the property line, and actually, that's really all you have to do. So just minor modification to this, send it to him, and as soon as you send it to him, and you meet those conditions, I'm, I, I think you'll be good to go. So I'm prepared to vote, conditional on you sending him that stuff.
I appreciate that.
What's your timeline for that?
I mean, so, timeline for making the edits?
Yes.
And I, I can't speak on Merrimack's schedule, so I mean, I'd have to reach out to them tonight.
Let's just say within the next 30 days.
Absolutely, yeah, because, I mean, may...
We know you need it before the ZBA meeting, so...
Correct, and that, that was why it was time of the essence for me, because I was hoping to get parking underneath my belt to finally go to the special permitting, so I didn't want to go there empty-handed and keep prolonging the process.
Two weeks or so.
Realistic.
Correct, yeah, exactly. So realistically, I could pay Merrimack to get it done, expedite it, have it in Mike's hands hopefully by next week before the ZBA meeting, so that I could have parking under my belt before I head out there, because if I go without parking...
If they can just show that, that three foot off the property line, for both of them, both sides of the street? If you show that, even if you hand draw in the guide rail, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
If, if they, they could probably put it on there just as easily anyway, but, you know, if, if, if it's, if it's simple for them just to bump everything back three feet, then, you know, I think you'll be good. Now, just keep in mind, the, the, you're supposed to be, be three feet from the property lines, too, so I don't know how the space, I, I took the plan away. I don't know how the space, the shared space between the two properties is going to work.
So, so we, we measured, and I have 50 feet of frontage on, front of zero, and Steve has, say, 60, so we're looking at like 110, if it was 112 feet, and we're using 90. 10 spaces by nine feet.
Yeah, you'd be, if it's 50 feet, you're a foot shy of getting three feet on each side in five spaces. If you get it to two feet on one side, that's fine. My point is, just try and make a buffer between your spaces and his spaces, not just for this, but if the property gets transferred, you then run into an issue of, you know, shared spaces and issues with tenants and...
Well, I, I hear where you're coming from, but at, at the end of the day, you know, there is two existing spaces there, three proposed. He has five, we have five, and we're thinking of putting signage up anyways, and some sort of small barrier of some sort. Steve's okay, and I'm okay, with just saying, "Hey, listen, there's 10 spaces here. There's going to be a sign that says 83, 85, one that says 69 or whatever it is." You know, and we're on the same page as far as that goes. If, if we made a space in between, I don't know...
I don't think it has to be a space in between. I think you can do cross-section striping between them.
Steven, like a couple?
My point is, your space on your lot should be three feet off this line, three feet off this line. That's to meet code, and three feet off the front line. If, if you run into an issue where, I just did the math, nine feet spaces...
Actually, a foot short then, because...
You'd be one foot short. It's 50, yeah, it's, it's 5.55 feet, 5.55 spaces, so you'd be, you need five and...
Right, so I'm at, I'm at 50, you know, 45, plus the six is 61, I mean, over a foot, you know, of shared space.
That's fine. My point is, just separate them. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
Do the best you can. I won't, I don't have a problem with it. Just separate them. You can use, you can even show on the plan, just, you know, a, you know, a six-foot stripe between your spaces and his. It's three on your side, three on his side, and then if you're two feet closer on the left side, so be it. That way, there's a separation between the two.
So other conditions would be, of course, that you would be striping them and they'd be all paved?
Of course, yeah, definitely.
Not to belabor in a point, but there's a photograph that Nick sent that I forwarded to you that's showing the opposite side of the street, where the space is cut out of...
It's, it's still, the email doesn't have an attachment.
No, this one should have gone.
Oh, you sent it to her?
Yeah.
Well, I can't get email.
Yeah, I apologize for the, the picture is not very professional, but, you know...
Mike, send it to me again. I mean, I, there's, there's no attach, I can tell you there's no attachment.
Your message, this is the second time now, Paul. Couldn't be delivered because there is no valid enhanced status code being issued.
I have it right here, if you want to see my computer at least.
Yeah, you, yeah, you want, just bring it up here, we can, we can...
Can you email it to us? No, just kidding.
This is across the street, and that's where the existing parking was for the neighbor.
Okay, so that's the tree you're talking about.
$1,500 to cut that tree down, and we're going to continue that, so that it's aesthetically pleasing. Again, where we are, that's the neighbors, they're fine with that. We're going to pick up the cost and even, you know, paving their side of it, just to make it all look uniform.
Just, just make sure this is three feet off there and three feet off there, and you'll be good to go.
Yep, so, so that actually there, where I drew that line, is three feet from there, and then that's enough space there, where it's definitely more than three feet between us, and then I've even the five feet from there.
I think he's an easement in between, too, right?
You can, if you want to just quickly take that down there, and then over there, just so they can see it. That's to the left of the house. We're too far, we're too far over. Go this way.
I know.
That's, that's what we're supposed to do. So this is, this is the area he's talking about right here, for the people in the audience. And he's talking about paving this section, which is the neighbor's parking and their parking.
Yeah, I had it.
This is technically, this is technically a paper street, where the, the, the area there, but... Thank you.
Yep, of course. So, so just to reiterate, and we're on the same page, so what is it exactly you guys need from me? An edit in the plan to show where it says a retaining wall, instead to show a guard rail, so change the verbiage there?
Well, no, it still needs to say retaining wall, if you need a retaining wall. It has to say retaining wall, so that we know, again, if you need...
Well, it doesn't necessar, according to DPW, it just needs a barrier.
Well, it may verify, yeah. Verify.
What was that?
Verify that. Keep, keep the retaining wall on there. We just heard from the DPW commissioner regarding that.
Yeah, we'll get to comment in a minute, thank you.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Sorry. You just heard from the DPW commissioner as well, so that, we're going to verify that, but leave on the proposed retaining wall until you, they go over it.
Okay.
Again, with the three feet aspect.
Okay, but if there's a...
Maybe that additional foot or two may, you know, put it over the limit.
Okay.
Okay, so show that, show the guard rail on it. Show that, it's, just write the words, "It's going to be paved..."
And striped.
And striped.
Paved, striped, add a guard rail on top of the retaining wall, even though we may not need both, per se.
I think you're going to need it. You definitely need a guard rail there.
No, guard rail, yeah, but it's sort of redundant to put a retaining wall.
It's not. You have the wall, and then you have, unless the wall, we're talking coming up.
The wall would create a barrier, though. You get what I'm saying? So if there's a retaining wall that goes up...
Not up, not up... No, not above ground level to hold the, to hold the fill, to hold the...
Retaining wall.
Correct, but if the wall went high enough to, to cover the grade going down, then it would be multifunctional, is what I'm saying.
You're saying you want to build it up to protect cars from going over, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
You may still additionally need something, depending what the material is, to make sure that it just doesn't tip, the whole, doesn't tip over if someone bumps it.
Yeah, I would just think, I would just think a cement wall, you know, would, would be a lot stronger than the guard rail.
You need to engineer that, so I would say, still show a guard rail, we want to, you know, alternate that out, but still show a guard, at this time, we're thinking there's a retaining wall with a guard rail on top.
Fair enough. So, so showing, verbiage showing that it's going to be paved, that lines are going to be created, a guard rail in addition to the retaining wall, is that, is that about it? Showing the dimensions of, any other dimensions that I'm missing there, other than the three feet?
Three feet from each property line and, and the frontage.
And from the sidewalk, yeah.
Okay, alright, fair enough. Thank you guys for your time, I appreciate it.
Paul, can I make a comment?
Yeah, absolutely, Peter.
I drove by the property a couple of times and took a look at the parking situation across the street on lot zero. And, and what, what concerns me an awful lot about that parking lot is, it's, it's very precarious to put cars there. I want to make sure that if there's going to be five parking spaces on that side of the street with this property, if there's a full 21 feet between the end of the sidewalk and the beginning of the retaining wall.
No problem.
The idea, the idea of putting fill on that lot to make it a little deeper is almost craziness, because that lot drops off so quickly and so deeply, that you'd have to put so much fill there to gain even a couple of feet. So if he's, if the owner, Nicholas, is talking about putting a retaining wall, I would hope that that retaining wall is going to be put on solid, solid property, and not, and not encroach on the 21 feet needed for the parking. Secondly, the, the picture that was put up with the parking space to the left of the house, where the owner says he's going to take down a tree, that driveway that leads up to the tree, it doesn't show it in that photo too well. That's practically at a 45-degree angle. And I am sure that right under that fill, when he starts working with that, he's going to run into a ledge. That whole, whole hill is ledge. So this is, this is not, I, I think is right here to the right of that school bus van. That, it doesn't seem it in that picture, but that is about a 45-degree angle going up. It's extremely steep, and I'd be willing to bet if you put a shovel in the ground, you're going to hit rock. So that's not going to be a very easy excavation. And the, and the last comment I have, and I hope that this can be solved, when I drove the Marshall Street that day, that the entire street was practically impassable because of rubbish barrels. I hope that the owner has some kind of a plan in place... I hope that the owner has some kind of a plan in place to get rubbish barrels off the streets so they're not, uh, just sitting on the sidewalk 24/7.
Just quick question, what do other people on the street do with their, um, trash barrels?
Well, you have to take them in, you can't leave them there.
Cause we, I mean, currently, uh, to my knowledge, there's no trash barrels that are ours there, cause the house is empty.
No, but there's gonna be six.
Yeah.
To, right, to reinstate that, so that they'll be like, right, there'll be three trash and three recycling barrels, so you need to provide for a sp, space probably on the side of a retaining wall or something.
Or up next to the building, I don't know, if you, if you, if you're gonna create a walkway down here, or if you look up on the screen where we're at, um, somewhere, somewhere where they're not just sitting on the street. Cause that is something that, that we usually do discuss when we do multifamily, um, reinstituting uses or doing site plans for these, is where are you gonna put, um, on-site trash barrels? You just don't want them to be on the street.
Well, they're not allowed by code to be removed on the sidewalk. They can only be there for so many hours before the trash pickup, so you have to remove them from the public way.
Right.
So just so you need, so they, keep that in mind when you're, when you're looking at that other parking, that parking space there, that you leave enough space to the side to be able to put the trash barrels along the edge.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay, thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
We do have... Oh, you can ask, yeah.
I'd like to know if any, any other board member has comments on this minor site plan?
I do have one hand raised if no board members have comments.
All right.
Mr. LaQuer, if you'd, oh, hold on.
This is not a public hearing, uh, for a minor site plan, but to accommodate...
Can I get a handout here? Says I have to promote him as a panelist. Cause they're using an older version of Zoom. Do you have any suggestions?
Dan?
Daniel?
Yeah, we can just promote him.
Thank you. All right.
I'm sorry, I'm confused, am I supposed to still be here?
No, you can sit down, cause we don't, we don't want back and forth anyway, we'll let you know if we have more questions.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. LaQuer?
We're not done yet.
Oh, don't, oh, don't go anywhere, we're, we're not done with you, this is all about you. We're just taking comment about it. Yes, 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 just, just...
Just from the podium.
Mr. LaQuer, just, you gotta press the, uh, microphone button to be able to, there you go.
Good evening.
Oh, hello.
Hi. This is, um, in regards to the...
Can you state your name and address for the record?
Oh, my apologies. I'm Joy LaQuer, and I'm at 17 Remen Place in Fitchburg.
Oh, this is not, this is not that hearing.
This is just, this, we're just doing Marshall Street right now.
Okay, so have I missed the proposal on the...
Nope, nope, you haven't missed, you haven't missed it.
We'll, we'll get, we'll get back to you, just, just keep watching and raise your hand when we get to that point.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, it's okay, we know you're there.
Okay. I'm just gonna have to remember to go to panelists that one next time, okay.
All right, so there's any more comment from any, uh, board members? So we were looking at approving conditionally...
Or anyone, anyone that happens to be here that has any particular questions or comments?
As long as what he does for retaining meets DPW standards, like...
The construction standards, yes.
Construction, yes.
That's kinda critical.
Yes.
That, cause, yeah.
Just a comment on that, uh, Paula, this is Nick Erickson here. So it's, it's DPW standards, but it's less our standards, um, and it's more building department standards. So whatever threshold requires an engineered plan is what the applicant needs to meet. I, I believe that's 36 inches from that, um, the, the base of the footings to the top of the wall, but I'd have to confirm that with Mark Barbador tomorrow, and that'll be just meeting building code requirements, not necessarily DPW standards.
Perfect.
Meeting building code for the retaining wall, right? And then as well as any, like, stand for the, uh, the guardrail, so...
Okay.
So the, we were looking to conditionally approve that these six, there's six parking spaces, one across at 8385, five across at Zero Marshall, each with a 21-foot setback from the public way or the...
Three foot setback from the public way.
Well, 20, I'm sorry, three foot setback from, but a total of 21 feet length, right?
Yep. Meet the hour with, so, so let me...
The depth as well, as well as paving them, striping them, getting, submitting any required engineering plan, um, as required by building code. And the trash. To the podium, to...
So on that, can you bring back that road view?
Yeah, hold on one second.
Because, and again, I, I just wanna make this, I just wanna be clear on this, cause I did get different information from DPW on the other side. So, that side one, so I think the misunderstanding in why the plan was drawn the way it was, was because we, we measured with Ryan 18 feet from the...
Road.
From there, from you have your, your mouse there, that line there, because...
I can, I can probably answer this very simply, because he probably thought it was from the property line, cause he does not know, I'm guessing, our requirements, the code requirements, it's just a guess. From your property line, wherever your property line is, the assumption is, it's, that's certainly not at the sidewalk.
Parking can't start until you're three feet beyond.
Onto your property, three feet onto your property on each side.
Okay, and so my understanding would be that my property doesn't start until that first line where your mouse is, correct? Am I correct?
I have no idea, you're gonna ask your surveyor, I have no idea where your property line starts.
Would the city build that piece of cement on my property?
They shouldn't have.
They probably wouldn't.
No, no, I would, I would assume it's at least the edge of that, but it could be further into it, I don't, I don't know.
Right, so from, from the edge of the property.
Obviously, there's a stamped plant, so I would assume they did ground surveys, right?
So I'm assuming, right?
So you can ask your engineer. It's gotta be three feet from the start of your property line.
So three feet, and then you start the parking of the 18-feet depth.
When you stripe those, the stripes cannot go up to the edge of your property line. They cannot go up to the edge of that. The, your, your, your parking, your parking stalls, the 18-by-9, have to be 18-by-9 from that three-foot setback. So 18 feet plus three feet, so...
And, and you guys are under the assumption most likely that that strip of cement there is the...
I will not make that assumption, cause I'm not a surveyor.
That is a sidewalk.
It's a sidewalk, so sidewalk would typically be on, on city property.
Yes.
Versus your road.
But, you know, my guess is again, your surveyor can tell you that. If, if they did a site survey, they should know where that property line starts.
And it's, so it's, so the code is three feet, you need to have a three-feet setback from a sidewalk, building, or property line for parking. And then your parking starts with the dimensions.
That, that's something for you to, you can figure that out with them, with, with, with MRMAC.
So, I know one of the board members brought, like, yes, concern about fill, but it's, you have to do it to the building code standards, so whatever, if you do need additional fill, has to meet all those construction standards as well as the retaining wall, so that's...
That's no problem, I mean, I have no other choice, you know? There's no other place where I can put parking, and if not, that building is useless, so I'm gonna have to do what I gotta do, you know?
Right, I hear. Uh, make a motion to continue, uh, to conditionally approve this pending submission of a revised site plan to Mike, subject to, you know, the, the parking stalls being three feet from each property line, front sides, striped and paved parking, meet building code requirements for any retaining wall or fill, um, and...
Yeah, addition of a suitable guardrail.
Yep.
And showing trash off the, off the sidewalk, where you're gonna start.
Guardrail or wall, whatever's safe, you know, whatever's a safe stopping point for cars.
All right, thank you so much for your time, guys.
A motion's been made. With a second, I'll say, I'll take, um, all those in favor, and I can take roll call in this. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say opposed. Alex?
Aye.
Elin?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Remember that, uh, ENOC plan, we found it, so if you wanted to...
Did you email it to me?
I have it on my screen.
Email it to me, I can't share your screen.
That's the problem, we, there's, it, it keeps bouncing for...
Email it to my other email address. You know my other one, right? Paulfont22@gmail.
Okay, let's see if that automatically builds in.
We'll do that, and then we have one more site plan for 160 Plymouth Street.
Do you have it up? Do you need me to? Yeah, ulfont22@gmail.com. Just bear with us for one second, we have one more thing before we get to you.
Appreciate everyone's patience.
Just a quick, uh, A and R plan. What's that? Have a C and wait for you?
Whatever, yeah, whatever you're comfortable with, it doesn't, whatever you want.
Need help over there, Mike?
We're trying to get tech savvy.
Well, it took us, it took us like three months to get used to go to meeting, and now we switch entirely to a new platform, so... All right, you guys figure that out, we'll go, we'll, we'll get back to it, let's, let's do Plymouth Street.
All right.
Don't need to stall.
Before us this evening, we also have a ni, minor site plan from one, for 160 Plymouth Street for a parking plan for a reinstated three-family, continue from our March 22nd meeting.
So, they forgot to change the reinstating three-family to the four-family.
Oh, that's right, it was four fam, why was it there? You're right, it is four-family.
And then, um, so we went back to the engineer.
Want me to share, Paul?
You can do, like, sure, if you want to, the latest plan?
Yeah, I got it. Let me just zoom out a little bit here, hold on, bear with me, one second, I got about a million things on my screen right here.
There we go.
Let's keep zooming out, oops.
Oh, I got you, I forwarded it already, yeah. But thank you, Tony.
Okay, so that's the latest one, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So we went over, we went back to the engineer, and we ended up just tagging one set of parkings for one of the units, and we come up with the five parkings, um, for the one and a half, one and a half, one and one, which was what they were requesting from us. The snow area, it's in place, they, they expanded the parkings, they put them to the nine feet. They're marked on the trash area for the, for the barrels, so we can use that area near the house. We have seven feet from the house towards the first parking. You asked for a minimum of four, so we, there was an extra three, they're just there. And, um, we went on in the front, we added all the landscaping and, uh, and the tree trim, the way all the flowers and all the stuff are also gonna go.
Just a quick question for you, just refresh our memory, what was the bedroom breakdown in each unit?
So the first floor has a one-bedroom and a, on a one-bedroom. And then the second floor had a, a three-bedroom, and the third floor had a three-bedroom.
Oh, wait a minute, that you were removing the three-bedroom unit, cause that requires two.
So that was my question, I thought you said that for the, so it's up to you guys, cause I thought you said that, um, my wife is here, she told me that it was two-bedroom, but you, I thought you guys said three-bedroom. It doesn't matter, I can change it.
Two-bedroom is, um...
I thought that for the three-bedroom, it was one and a half, um, parking for the three-bedrooms. It was one and a half parking.
It's one and a half parking for a two-bedroom, it's two parking spaces for the three-bedroom. So that's why we think, we discussed...
So we'll have to eliminate...
To two two-bedrooms and two one-bedrooms.
Okay, so yeah, we'll eliminate one of the extra, actually, she told me it was like that, and I thought it was the other way, so...
So contingent upon that configuration...
And, and the one caveat I'm going to say is, and, and this is more for your knowledge, don't make an office or something like that that's gonna turn into a bedroom. Make the bedrooms bigger, make the kitchen bigger, make the living room bigger, whatever you need to do.
Yeah, eliminate, we can eliminate the, the wall, if you see in one of the, in the one-bedroom, if you go over to the first floor, um, plans, you'll see where there was the two-bedrooms in the back part of the property. We eliminated the wall on the plans and opened it up and added a dining room to the...
Perfect.
To the kitchen area.
I just wanna make it, because the multifamilies have a tendency of over time getting morphed into more bedrooms, more spaces. It, it's, it's, the, the way we solve that is when you're doing the build-out, that you make sure it's not convenient.
It's open, it's open, um, it's open, it has all the LBL, um, for the support, for the structural support, it's gonna show, it shows it all on the plan.
So I would just say it's, it's conditional on those bedroom counts.
Yeah, I can, I can just have it changed tomorrow.
Perfect, that's fine. I, I, I have no problem just saying that it's conditional on there being no more than two bedrooms at any time in any of the units.
On the second and third floor.
So 1122.
Yes, sir.
Well, it's gotta be, uh...
1122. That's five spaces.
1122, for five spaces.
Yep.
Yep.
All right.
All right.
I appreciate you adding the trash and the fact that this is no storage, it looks like...
And the guardrail.
Yep, and it looks like you're three feet off each side there. So, it looks pretty good.
Does any board member have any, um, questions or cons, or recommendations or comment?
No?
Oh, you did a good job on the resubmitting.
Thank you very much.
Um, does, although this isn't public comment, I'm just gonna ask because I know people had their hands raised briefly, so if anyone either in the audience or, uh, virtually has any questions or comments, use the raise your hand function. You obviously don't, you can raise your own hand. All right, thank you, guys. We don't have any comments. Uh, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, 160 Plymouth Street, subject to the plan provided, and also the understanding that there being, uh, the bedroom counts be two one-bedroom units on the first floor, two two-bedroom units on the second floor at a maximum.
And two bedrooms.
I'll second that.
All right, a motion's been made with a second. All those in favor, and I'll take roll call, all those, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed can say opposed. Alex?
Aye.
Elin?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
Did you say you had to revise this for something, did I remember that at the beginning?
When, the last time when I submit?
No, 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 I mean today, did, okay, I was just gonna say...
You gotta revise his bedroom for the structure.
Right, just, right, so, yeah, so whatever, whatever you need to do, just send it to Mike, just so we, just so we have it on file. We could put it in with that.
Yeah, so actually, when you pull your building permit for the site plan, it's contingent upon those, that unit configuration to meet, to match the parking.
Okay, I'll get on that tomorrow, thank you, guys.
You, good luck.
Thank you and your family particularly for their patience.
Thank you very much, have a good night, everybody.
Yeah, you guys too.
All right, we're into the next segment of the meeting this evening, of public hearings.
Just very quickly, if you want, before we get into it, do you... So if anyone's here for 41 Fox Street, um, I don't know if you are, um, the applicant isn't ready to proceed, they don't have a plan, so we're gonna just continue that to our next meeting, so, um, apologies if anyone's here. If you have anything to say, you can let us know, but that'll be, uh, most likely, hopefully, next meeting. We still haven't seen a revised engineered plan yet, though. Did you tell David, by the way? I emailed you this morning to make sure that he sends over a revised plan? He's aware that we're still waiting on a plan, right? Okay, good. Make a motion to continue to our next meeting.
Second. Motion made with a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 And Daniel Street?
Any opposed? Okay, continued.
She knows, but it's up to Paula, what she wants to do next. I think we're gonna do zoning first.
And, um, yes, we'll do zoning next.
Okay.
All right, wait, is, um, Tom available? Oh, there's Tom, hey, Tom, I couldn't recognize you.
Could you see him personally?
Yes.
Mask makes it, makes it hard, but my wife is due like any day now, so I'm just trying to take extra precautions here.
Everybody put your thinking caps on now.
Yeah, so this one's complicated, Paula. I don't know how you wanna start. I guess what I would say just at the outset, I know some of the board members were here when we went through this list of nine zoning changes that were, the impetus for it was to amend our floodplain ordinance by law, which FEMA basically did an audit and said we had to submit it, an amended version to them for approval. So, while the hood was open, so to speak, we took eight other amendments and we had, I believe Paula, Paul, and Laura were at the meeting, some virtually, some in person, and we came to agreements on, the board came to agreements on all of the nine amendments, but two of them in particular, number seven, the multifamily development standards, and number one, the table of principal use question pertaining to residential uses by right on Main Street. There was thought to be some agreement, and I think upon further review, we're reopening the hearing to reassess exactly what the planning board would like to do on those two particular items that are a bit more complicated. So, Paula, I don't know if you wanna start on the easy ones and then we can get to those?
Would you, would you just go through all the amendments, but we'll just skip over one and seven for the moment, so that we just get the votes for those?
Sure thing. So, amendment number two is a pretty simple one, that just fixes a typo, and thankfully you all recommended to implement that change. That's 181.
I think the easiest way is make a motion to recommend.
Yeah.
Make a motion to recommend.
For each one, we'll do that.
Amendment two. That way, we don't get caught up and we don't lose everything in the, so make a motion to recommend amendment two.
Second.
This is also a hearing, so there's a motion.
You don't need roll call for this, but you do need to take a vote if you wanna do that.
Yes, well...
Take a vote, no.
I know, it's a hearing too, so if any from the public has any...
We still can, we're gonna do it packaged as a whole at the end, but we want consensus for each item is why I wanna do this.
Item number two.
No, no, take a vote on that one.
Right, was just mentioned, so... The motion was made with a second for recommendation. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay.
All I wanna do is hear if I hear any opposed, that's the only reason why I'm doing this, so, okay, good.
Then we have item number, amendment number three.
So, this amended section 181, 3362, section B subsection three, and it voted, the planning board at the meeting on the 14th of March voted to amend as follows, the structure or zoning requirements for the number of off-street parking spaces in section 181.51, period. There is an additional clause that stated, provided that the parking spaces may be or are located on the premises or on a dedicated private or public off-street parking facility located within 800 feet or reasonable distance from the lot where the principal use is. That was just a lot of word salad for something that's already within 181.51, so to eliminate some of the confusion, we just recommended getting rid of that clause. The board recommended that as well at that meeting.
You good with that, Paula?
I am.
That was amendment three.
Make a motion to recommend.
We did have also some feedback, there was some comment from the ZBA regarding that.
Attorney Tree does have her hand raised. I was gonna wait till the end till we got to the...
No, no, I just wanted to mention that it was recommended, but it was also just contingent upon ZBA recommendations.
And I do, Attorney Tree, we'll get to you, when we do the package, when we recommend the package, we'll, you can have input prior to that. Make a motion to recommend amendment three.
A motion's been made, is there a second? And most, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, all those opposed? All right. And we did have amendment number four.
So, amendment number four took, this was also in the vacant and abandonment section, 181, 3366, and this section listed out a set of criteria that must be met to grant a special permit for pre-existing non-conforming use that's been abandoned or discontinued. And one of the criteria was that you, you basically had to have been absent for military service or some other legitimate cause, and you made good faith efforts to keep the project viable. That wasn't meant to be a criteria that must be met, it was meant to be a consideration that the board should make in their decision-making, so the decision was basically to remove it from a criteria and make it a consideration, so it...there's a dog barking.
I was wondering how long you could make it through that.
I used to teach sixth graders, I can pretty much talk through anything. So, it was still in the clause, it just was no longer a consideration essentially, and the board voted to recommend that.
And that's, I know also there was some ZBA recommendations on that, which we also heard was the, and a subject to...
Make a motion to recommend amendment four.
Second.
A motion was made a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? All right.
Amendment five concerns section 181.54123 lot width, and this, the phrasing remains the same, it's just about the placement of a comma. Commas are really important, also something I used to teach my sixth graders in grammar school, and it can affect the meaning of a sentence, so in this case, inserting the comma in the appropriate location gave us the intended spirit of the law as we originally wanted to amend it. So, the planning board voted to approve that amendment number five.
Make a motion to recommend amendment five.
It's pretty straightforward. A motion's been made with a second, all those in favor for recommendation, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
Amendment number six, amend sections 181, 6922 and 181, 6923, this is the earth removal provision of our zoning. So, if you recall, in April of '21, when we redid our whole ordinance, we were going back and forth as to whether earth removal should be something within the purview of the ZBA or the planning board, and it was ultimately determined that the special permit granting authority should be the planning board, but there were still some remnants of that initial revision that said ZBA. So, this is just again to revert to the, what is in the use code and elsewhere throughout the ordinance, which is that the planning board's a special permit granting authority here.
Make a motion to recommend amendment six.
Second.
A motion's been made with a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Skip over number seven.
I'll go ahead and skip seven for now. Number eight is a pretty simple amendment. There's a property for School Street, it's parcel 1888-0. It is currently split in two between the downtown business district and Residence B, I believe, and so this is the former Hoffman School, old HM Francis Building, and the property has frontage on Main Street and is more in line with the purpose of the downtown business district, and we've got proposals for redevelopment that are really more in line with the downtown business type of redevelopment than something you'd see in Residence B. So, the proposal was to make that part of the downtown business district, that again was approved by the planning board in March. Recommended, I should say.
Yep.
All right.
I'll make a motion to recommend amendment eight.
A motion's been made?
Second.
With a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed?
Amendment nine is 181, 85, that's the floodplain protection overlay district, and the planning board recommended approving this change because FEMA told us we needed to, so wasn't much room for discussion.
Make a motion to recommend amendment nine.
Second.
A motion's been made with a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed?
We're doing 1B separately, right? The next one, the one at the bottom?
Yes, it's just because it's separate.
We'll do that next, we're gonna do it back-to-back, but we'll do that next, the Snow Street.
Oh, onto the map changes as well, okay.
We'll do that, because it's a separate on our agenda, so we'll just jump to it as soon as we take the vote on this.
Okay, so are we going back to numbers two and seven?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought, all right.
1 and 7, yes.
Right. So, for those board members that weren't here, ultimately, what we're trying to solve for here is that in our use table of our ordinance, it states, and I'm paraphrasing here, that housing on upper stories of Main Street is allowed by right, and that conflicts with the multifamily development provision, which essentially sets a lot size limit and a lot size requirement for any development, so basically, if you're gonna have a three-family mixed-use development downtown, you need to have a 7,500 square foot lot size minimum. And just for reference, 409 Main Street, right down the corner, that's four units, it's on about 2,000 square feet of a lot. You know, Main Street's really tight, and so we really found ourselves in a situation where the footnote said it's allowed by right, but then it isn't really, and it was not helpful for the development community as they're working with my office on plans and we tell them it's by right, but it's actually not, and we really wanna, you know, mean what we say and say what we mean, so I think this was just an effort to clarify, either to say it's not allowed by right, or if it is, create the conditions by which it actually would be allowed by right. And so, this is where I think the board had some varying, various ideas amongst the members, and I will defer to you all as to how you wanna handle that at this point.
So, there are a few suggestions regarding that, as Tom mentioned. Did you see the, I did propose a couple of provisions regarding that for consideration just to, just to try to get us all on the same page scenario. I don't know if you printed that out and brought it with you, but I can show it on the screen.
Do you want me to pull it up?
Sure, that'd be helpful. I'm like, I have it in front of me, but my screen's not working very well here.
No, I got it, give me a second. Zoning discussion.
So, this, as Tom mentioned, there's a footnote in the table of uses regarding...
It's up on the screen, Paula.
By right uses on Main Street, for, which is in the DB district regarding the second floor residential by right, so above the first floor, only on Main Street. And this is where the density provision kicked in, and it was because of the new multifamily development regulations that were adopted last September, otherwise it, it wouldn't have ended to this provision. We did have an applicant who had to come before us to get relief or waiver from the density when they were doing, I think it was four units, right, the four units. So, questions to some of the board would be, as Tom mentioned, should it be limited to a certain number of units allowed in that provision, or we could also consider to exempt it pretty much like it was previously, so that it's, there is no limit regarding the redevelopment of our, of residential, of the first floor on Main Street?
Although we've gone back and forth a few times, the, I was under the impression there was a general consensus that the board wanted to see redevelopment of Main Street in such a way that we did not wanna inhibit any sort of development by, by the bylaw, meaning if you're on Main Street and you have pre-existing buildings, they can be developed above ground level as residential units. That's at least been my preference. I know we had the issue of, we specifically talked about existing buildings when we originally did the recommendation, and, and I know it's, it was kind of a technicality at that point, and I don't know, my recommendation would still be the same as what I had originally when we did this a month or so ago, in that I think that uses, residential uses above ground floor on Main Street should be allowed by right without coming to our board or any board, provided that they're existing buildings, and I only say that because of properties like 255 Main and Johnsonia, sites like that, which we don't yet know what they're gonna be. So, that, that was my suggestion before and that's still my suggestion now.
I was under the, the same premise. I'm, I would feel comfortable with just exempting because it's the existing buildings there, regardless of it's two units or 10 units, it's, that's what the number of units would be to redevelop tho, those existing facilities. Again, it's not the vacant lots on Main Street, but the existing buildings, again, to aid that redevelopment of our Main Street area, which I think was the, kind of the premise of that footnote, to encourage that by right, you can do this in an existing building.
Within the existing framework of a building that's there now.
I, the only, my only question that, after thinking about this long and hard for a month or so, and listening to the council meeting, or legislative, whoever was it, whatever, I don't even remember.
Economic Development Committee.
Yeah, so, the, the only concern I have is, does it create an extra layer of kind of complexity if we add the word existing? Because then, how do you handle proposed?
Right.
Just the, is proposed then just the underlying multifamily zoning in all of those districts? 2,500, 7,500 square foot minimum, 2,500 square foot per unit above, or whatever it ends up being?
Right.
Or a special permit with us waiving those density requirements, which I would imagine is the case, it was for 255 Main. It makes sense if, you know, like if the FRA decides to develop the Johnson, find someone to develop the Johnsonia site and it ends up being the same, you know, a five or six-story building, you, you need to make sure there's controls for, you know, adequate nearby parking and site characteristics and whatever else makes sense for that building, that's why you just don't wanna carte blanche, say, a new building can be whatever, so that's, that's my thought process.
I would offer that some of that could be cured through the site plan review process, and we've, we've got really big impactful projects before us tonight that are simply site plan review, and it doesn't mean that there is no, especially regarding parking.
If it were decided that that wording causes a problem, I would, I would not have a problem with just carte blanche saying that properties with frontage on Main Street, which we're gonna talk about in a second, the actual wording, properties with frontage on Main Street can be developed above ground floor for residential units, if existing's an issue, but my recommendation to, for this board, at least to the council, is to say, we recommend it as existing properties by right above first floor, you know.
So, that being, as you mentioned that, let's ask the board members about, you're looking, the proposed petition was three or, three or fewer in order to try to set some type of a limit. We don't, don't have to set a limit, we could just also exempt it as well, just to be clear that if we're exempting it from the density provisions for by right for those residential units, to encourage the redevelopment of those residential units, so they don't have to come to the planning board for every redevelopment, because those lot sizes are tiny, everyone's gonna have to come for a waiver.
Exactly, I would, I would be in agreement with exempting it, and I'm still more comfortable with the residential on the second floor, but not at the ground floor level, but exempting the density.
Yes, so, I don't know if you can see it up there on the, so in red I have up there, does the board recommend proposed language to limit or exempt?
Yeah, so...
Does anybody else have any, want, anybody have any, want, see any more thoughts on this? What are people's thoughts on that?
I think the exemption is probably the more realistic and feasible way to go about it. I think we wanna encourage development, and I think the exemption's gonna be a lot more helpful for us.
Okay. Anybody else? Elin?
No, I agree that the exemption should control. I think it's smart, I think it's looking forward, and I think it will help us in the end.
And the, and the only other thing, aside from, you know, if anyone else certainly wants to chime in on it, that's fine, but the only other thing we kind of, we talked about tweaking was the as viewed from Main Street versus frontage on Main Street.
Well, we can talk about, I'll get those two bullet points next.
Okay.
So, first it's just, do you want, then we'll go in.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, when we say existing, it's as the building exists now, and like, so you can't like pile on 15 more floors, right?
That's the exact reason why my recommendation originally was existing buildings the way they stand, because we want them, we want people to develop the buildings that are there now.
Definitely, for sure, yep.
So, yeah, that, my thought was exactly that thought process.
So, if there were people comfortable or consensus that the board's recommendation would be to exempt above the first floor residential uses by right in the DB district from the lot density requirement?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
If, if...
I would say all those in, all those in favor, say aye.
Yeah, aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Okay, now, the second part, talked, as Paul talked about, there's a couple pieces to that, also the footnote, as you mentioned, one of them is about adding existing buildings, if we want to recommend that that term be added to the footnote, as well as the, the issue of, you'd see the second bullet there, as viewed is discretionary, should the board recommend language to clarify or limit eligible structures to structures with lot frontage on Main Street? Because right now, as the, as the footnote reads...
I think our recommendation should be, given that in a perfect world, it makes the most sense, that it should be for the buildings that exist today, because that was the point of our initial conversation. Yep.
I concur with that, and then the...
I agree.
Does the board, anybody want any discussion on that? Or we can vote on that piece?
I can if you want. I was gonna do, I was gonna put them on one, because it was a checkbox, but that's I can if you want. I was gonna do, I was gonna put them on one, cause it was a checkbox, but that's fine. I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Okay.
Motion, I'll make a motion to recommend that component, I guess.
So.
Second.
Motion is made in second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. The other piece was, since as viewed is discretionary in the current footnote, should the board recommend language to clarify or limit eligible structures to structures with lot frontage on Main Street? Which, you might have some discussion on that.
Yeah, I mean, I, 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 I know it was brought up by more than one person. I, I thought it made sense as viewed for Main Street, cause you're talking about, when you're standing on Main Street, the property's on Main Street, but I understand. I don't care either way. I have no, I have no particular issue with saying properties with frontage on Main Street. I just worry that that might be, I haven't thought it through, might be some properties that aren't predominantly Main Street properties, but happen to have frontage on Main Street. Meaning a property like, that's set back 50 feet from Main Street, but happens to have 10 feet of frontage. I can't think of one off the top of my head, but I'm sure they exist. That's, that's why I like as viewed from Main Street, cause we're talking, what we're talking about is standing outside this building, looking at the building across the street, that's, that's, you're viewing it for Main Street.
That's so.
I didn't understand the, I didn't understand the ambiguity there. It made sense to me, but.
We're saying someone, you know, you could get on a fork truck and say something, I can view it, or you can say, view the building behind Main Street, and say you're viewing it.
That's true. Again, I don't have any problem with it. If you feel strongly, I'm fine with saying frontage on Main Street.
I just, if, does any board members, just to clearly identify when we're talking about as viewed, we're really talking about parcels that have frontage on Main Street.
I would suggest frontage on Main Street.
Just to make it more defined.
I'm sure it'll still come up in conversation, so, yeah.
I mean, there's exceptions to that.
This is how it looks, and this is how we want to see it, so.
Tom, do you have strong feelings one way or another about that?
I want to be clear.
Just be clear.
Frontage on Main Street is clear. Mike and I, depending on the season, you can see certain properties from Main Street.
Yep.
Well, and depending as time goes on, too, like 41 Fox Street, like five years ago, when the old fire station and the fire alarm building was standing. You wouldn't have been able to see that from Main Street, 41 Fox, I mean. Now you can, cause those are demoed.
I mean, the argument there is it's not in the downtown business district, so we wouldn't have to worry about that property. Fox Street?
Oh, but you know. Goes out a bit, yeah.
Oh, okay. I didn't think it was.
These are just for Main Street.
This is just Main Street, so called residential uses by right on Main Street, and right now it said as viewed by Main Street.
I will put that in the form of a motion, Paula, cause I think it's unanimous.
Second.
Awesome. All right. A motion's been made in second.
Recommendation.
In favor of that recommendation. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay. So there was some, so the, there's language there, it says proposed other, and that's the, that's suggest, just some suggested language for what we just voted on.
Right.
So because the board recommended an exemption. It goes into the, you see the bold line here, goes into update the multifamily development standard language pending the board's recommendation to Amendment One. So if the board recommends residential uses by right on Main Street provision as exempt from the lot density, see example below, just for some language.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, cause it says.
Depending on what those.
Cause it says by right. Yep.
Right, by right. So if you scroll down a little bit further, Paul, it says proposed language. There you go.
Yep.
So, so if that language are similar, you'd update the multifamily development standard section, just to clarify that residential uses by right on Main Street located in this table and that footnote
I'm just.
Are exempt from this provision of lot density.
I'm sure Councilor Zarela will do a better job than, than I can about this, but I'm just trying to make sure that anything we do here doesn't make developing like the Johnsonia site more prohibitive, but I can't, but it won't. I, I just want to make sure that there's no wording that, that, that causes a problem with a proposed residential use. We're talking about by right uses, so.
Yes, and additionally, already underneath multifamily development standards, the, the board can waive all density in the DB District already, under separate provision.
Section six from the standards.
What's that, Tom?
Section six from the standards.
Section six from the standards. So your question about the Johnsonia would not?
Okay. One more.
So, um, does the board want to?
Oh, yeah, I'll make a motion to recommend those three components as, as Amendment One. Recommend Amendment One with those three components. I lost my sheet, no.
The proposed language to multifamily development, section one, paragraph one.
I'll second.
Motion's been made with the second. All those in favor of that recommendation, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay. Now it's number seven.
Okay.
That's okay.
Onto the map?
Mm-hmm. Number seven.
Amendment seven, right?
Yeah, multifamily development standards. Oh, no, that's, I mean, I suppose that's.
That's just.
That's part of it. That's, we're, we're cleaning it up now, right? That's the same as our last vote, we're just cleaning up the.
No, that was paragraph one.
No, I know, I'm saying, but aren't we just clearing it up now by getting rid of?
Basically, if.
Yes.
This just has to now be consistent with the vote that you just took.
Yep. Okay. I'll make a motion to recommend Amendment Seven based upon our recommendation for Amendment One.
Second.
Okay. A motion's been made with the second. All those in favor of the recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay.
Because this was one package, did you just want to recommend this and then do the thing, or do you want to just?
This is a public hearing, so I'm taking, now we take public comment.
Yeah.
So we can then consider those and alter any of our recommendations as well.
Okay. Attorney Tree, I know is waiting. Let me stop sharing my screen here so I can get to people.
If you want to explain, please just, for everyone, right, state your name for the record.
Yes. So if anyone is gonna speak on behalf of this or anything else tonight, if you're here, you can, please use the podium, state your name and, for the record, and we're gonna start with our ZBA Chair, I believe, ZBA Chair, Attorney Tree. Whoop, I unmuted the wrong person, I'm sorry. Attorney Tree. There you go. Hopefully that worked that time. There we go.
Good evening. Yes, Chair. Most recently, after the retirement of Lauren McNamara, who served the city very well for 19 years, thanks to her very much.
Congratulations, Christine.
Thank you. I'm here tonight to submit the ZBA comment on the proposed amendment after meeting. And I will submit the, the comments on Amendment Three and Four first. The ZBA did support the passage of those comments, of those amendments as written. But wanted to note particularly that Amendment Three will be interpreted prospectively to require a special permit through the ZBA for any proposal to resume and abandon three-family or multifamily use where new parking must be created rather than being pre-existing. The ZBA comment on the First Amendment. Any grant of residential uses by right should be limited to existing buildings with frontage on Main Street, given the reason behind this amendment, which is redevelopment of existing structures. And should not be expanded to the remainder of the downtown business district, which has a number of areas which are already dense and possess little or no available parking. The ZBA supports the continued prioritization of commercial uses on the first floors of Main Street properties where available convenient parking for residents. Business owners and visitors to Main Street remains a concern. And the ZBA does not support an unlimited number of residential units by right for the Main Street footnote to Section 181.313. Likewise, as to the possible amendment to Section 181.743 Sub One. The ZBA recommends retaining a requirement of 2,500 square foot in lot area per residential unit for every unit over three units. On Amendment Seven. The ZBA supports retaining board level review, whether Planning Board or Zoning Board, of any reduction in density protections where the reduction or waiver of the density requirements has the possibility of a detrimental effect on current residents and business owners with particular attention to the issues of parking and traffic impact. And then finally, I just wanted to commend the Chair for the hard work that she put into the summary of all of these provisions. It was complex. The summary straightened it out, and it's an example of, again, the hard work that the Planning Board Chair puts in on a regular basis for the benefit of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Tree. Does any, is there any further public comment? Is there?
Anyone here have any comments or questions about?
I think Councilman Hasinger.
Yeah, he's not, he, he's not here tonight, so I'm sure he'll share them with the council.
Tom, do you have anything to add?
Only, I guess some clarification on Attorney Tree's question about the, the parking requirements in 3362. So if I heard her correctly, did she state that if any new parking was proposed, it would need to have a special permit?
The clarification was how the ZBA would interpret the amendment. And that would be if there is an application to resume the use of an abandoned three-family or multifamily property, and new parking has to be created. The applicant will be required to go through the ZBA and may not make use of the provision to go directly through the Building Commissioner.
And is that the Building Commissioner's determination or the ZBA's?
Well, the Building Commissioner would make the initial determination, of course, on the application. And we would address that on, if, if anybody didn't file to appeal that decision of the Building Commissioner.
And is that based off of the feedback from the initial Planning Board meeting on, on the topic, or based off of what was in the original petition?
That is based on the original petition. It was discussed at the ZBA meeting in March regarding the proposed amendments. The ZBA is in favor of this provision, let me be clear. And after speaking with the Building Commissioner, I believe the Building Commissioner deems the provision an appropriate one. There are some things where the authority granted to the Building Commissioner may be in excess of what he is comfortable with in, in terms of whether he's enforcing the building, the zoning ordinance, or whether he is legislating the zoning ordinance. So he was in support of this amendment likewise, because these types of properties where new parking is being created, even if it's adequate to meet the requirements under zoning. He felt that that, and I apologize, cause I feel like I'm speaking for him. But he felt that, that should receive ZBA review, not be approved at the Building Commissioner level.
Okay.
So I think the summation of that is the ZBA and the Building Commissioner are in agreement.
Attorney Tree, did, did, did you draft up a letter for the council to review when they approve these? Or, or at the very least, my, the reason why I say that is, I, I.
We have some prior comments, but if you would submit this in writing, that would be helpful.
Well, what I'm saying is, it, I, I think you guys have, I mean, you, obviously, you're very knowledgeable in a lot of these things, and it, as, as a planning board, we're making recommendations that, you know, that, that kind of we think makes sense for the purposes we're handling, but we can't, we can't look at everything that the other boards do. So my suggestion would be forward an email along to President Zarela or, or Councilman Hasinger, and that way they're heard when they're making their determination. Cause I, you know, I, I, just, just so everyone knows, cause what's said here might not get to them, right?
Thank you. Mr. Fontaine would be happy to do that. And let me recognize that our two boards don't always agree, nor do they have to. And I, I think providing feedback from both sources is helpful to the council in making its determination. I also think that consideration of differing viewpoints is how we get to the best solution. Please don't take my comments as, as a suggestion that this is a mandatory requirement for the Planning Board. The Planning Board is its own entity.
Oh, yeah, I just want to make sure you're heard. That's the only reason why I said that. I love the fact that you're here providing information for us.
And then so the, the board's formal recommendation for Amendment Three was also to recommend it, but also refer to the ZBA recommendations regarding any amendments to that paragraph.
I just don't know if they get sent with what we're doing, is why I'm saying that.
We do have the, in writing, some original feedback. But since they're meeting, we could also accept and forward any additional, what.
I think it, I think, I think it means more if the ZBA sends their, their comments to the council than it coming via us secondarily. So that's all that's, that's the reason why I said that.
Okay.
So, but.
I have just emailed the written version of these comments to both of you.
Thank you.
But we will, we will go ahead and submit them directly to the council as well.
Perfect.
All right. And just to clarify, in, the items one, Amendment One and Seven, there was, there was some, there was recommendations regarding from ZBA on that, too?
Mm-hmm. Since these are separate on our agenda, does it make sense just to do a recommendation of Amendments One through Nine?
Yes.
Make a, make a motion to recommend.
Wait, wait, wait. Is there any, for the hearing, gonna close it?
Gotcha. You can ask.
If there's any further, if anybody want to offer any further public comment regarding these zoning amendments, please raise your hand.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Seconded.
A motion's been made in second to close the hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? All right.
Make a motion to recommend Amendments One through Nine as previously discussed.
All right. Do we have the, is that clear enough, though, Tom? As previously discussed, what we talked about for each of the bullets.
Previously discussed is clear, as long as it's not being impacted by the comments we just heard in any way.
Nope, nope, just what, what we voted on already.
Okay, that's clear.
Yep.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Yep.
We're all good. All right. So a motion was made with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed? All right. So we do have also.
If you want to quickly do Snow Street and.
Uh, let's do the other zoning amendment.
Yeah, Snow Street and Elm.
Yes, thank you.
This one is.
Board members, have a good evening and an excellent night.
Thank you, Attorney Tree.
Thank you.
This one is much less complicated than, than Nine we just took. So the Pittsburgh Arts Community, otherwise known as BF Brown, just received their state funding to get the project up and running. So basically, for the next six months, that project's gonna be sitting with lawyers from the state, the feds, locally, to review all the documentation, because there's a lot of complicated legal mechanisms involved in the funding sources. And one of the things that was encountered is, the project was approved in the 40R Smart Growth District, that the board approved in 2019. But Low Playground, or Low Park was not included in that, and now, of course, we learned later on that a piece of Low Playground, Low Park, I keep mixing the two, is used as an access easement to, to access the parking area in the back by the stables. So when the lawyers started taking a look at it, doing their due diligence, they recommended we add that to the zoning district, just to make sure that this project is fully entitled with, with no issues with the permit approval. So that one's pretty straightforward, I think. The project's already been approved. The other one, 49 Snow Street, originally was approved as a special permit and as a 100% market rate project. They're now looking at this as a mixed income project, which then makes it eligible for becoming part of our Smart Growth District as well. And what that does for the city is we get $3,000 per every unit developed, per Chapter 40R, which, you know, do the math, we got 150 units here, which is, is a nice chunk of change. And, you know, I think the ultimate unit count is gonna go down if it is an affordable project. They're gonna have to have more two bedrooms, more three bedrooms, but I think it's, it's worth considering to approve it through this provision. And that's it.
Yep, got no problem with either of those.
So, this is a hearing. Does any board, first of all, does any board member have any comment regarding the proposed petition?
I have to abstain from Low Park.
Okay.
That's fine.
I'll sit here.
Okay, and is a he, what's that, Alex?
No, that was Peter. He said.
Oh, Peter, sorry. Oh, thank you.
Anyone in the, in the public.
In the public.
Sorry, go ahead.
Domain, either in the physical presence here, have any comment regarding this zoning amendment that they'd like to offer? Or if anybody is online and would like to raise their hand and participate and have any comment regarding this amendment?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
So you see none? Okay. So seeing no further participation, there's a recommendation to close the hearing.
Second.
With the second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? All right, the discussion.
Make a motion to add 49 Snow Street and Zero Elm to the 40R Smart Growth District. And when I say Zero Elm, I mean the specific Low Playground, Low Ball Park site.
As identified.
There's other Zero Elms.
As identified on the map.
Right, yep, yep. That's in the form of a motion.
All right.
Second.
Second.
And that we, we have seconds. So a motion's been made with the second. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? But for, all those, first of all, excuse me. All those in favor, say aye. I'm gonna confuse it with real call.
Aye.
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 All right. All those opposed?
Perfect. Thank you, Tom.
You all.
Thank you. Our next item, we have a special permit in site plan review. Our next item, we have a special permit in site plan review for Pristine Choice Realty LLC for a four-unit residential. We were waiting for an updated site plan. I'm not sure if the applicant was here. There was a request to continue.
Did you say the applicant's here, Mike?
Jose Martinez.
Yep. Oh, that's right, that's right, that's right. No longer on there.
Okay.
He was on at the beginning, maybe to say that he, I don't know.
Was requesting.
Wanted a continuance.
Okay.
Okay.
So the applicant was requesting a continuance? Anybody like to put that in form?
Is anyone here, 147 Daniel Street? No? Good. Okay. Make a motion to continue our next meeting.
Second.
Motion's been made with a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right.
Very quickly, we have that A and R ready.
Can we pop that one up on the screen?
It'll only take a minute.
I can, can I stop sharing my screen?
I already, I already took it from, I can take it from you.
Thank you.
It's easier with this one because you don't have to switch them back and forth. So this is, I got to pull up my controls here first.
650 John Fitch Highway?
Yes, that's it.
So what's happening here? We have.
Hold on, I got to, I got to pull up the controls. I got to get the.
Right now, it's this, like, through the lower left corner, you can see the property lines around the existing car wash.
So this is Chris McNary, right?
Correct, yeah.
Yep. I just unmuted you, Chris. Are you there?
If he is, he's a very patient man.
He's listed as unmuted. Chris? All right, while we're waiting for that, Mike, why don't you go through? He's unmuted, so.
The change is, okay, so the existing lot around the car wash on John Fitch Highway is the lower left quadrant, if you will. So say the southwest quadrant. Do you see a sort of almost rectangle? And that's proposed to be changed to a more vertical, almost north-south line between the two parcels, to split that from the former RV place.
Oh, so are they obtaining like a back parcel lot to it? Parcel, I see.
Yep, there goes, the proposed line would go front, 90 degrees up from John Fitch Highway, right to there, Paul. Yep.
There's a delay in my cursus, so whenever you say something, I've already done it, so I keep going back and then, anyway.
So that's the new line?
That's correct.
He just identified not to sell.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, either way, it's, you know, it's a, it's pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward with this district, so. Well, we have had some interest in the former RV place. I thought we might have had a plan submitted a couple of months ago, but nothing concrete yet, as yet.
Make a motion to authorize Mike to sign the A and R.
Second.
Motion's been made with a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right. Thank you.
Okay.
A and R.
On track.
So we are now down to Woodland Estates.
I'm going to recuse.
Okay.
Okay.
So we have a public hearing before us for an amendment of, is Jamie Row here?
Jamie is virtual, yes.
Okay. As well.
And Joanne's here too.
And Joanne's here too.
Hit allow to talk. Jamie and Joanne, you, I both hit allow to talk for both of you, so whoever wants to talk, I suppose.
So this is a hearing for a permit to just add a project completion timeline.
So, so just as Paula said, and just to be clear for kind of why we're here, you know, when we have permit conditions now, what we generally have is we have a permit to, a condition to when it needs to start, how long it needs to take to start, and how long they have to finish. This permit condition is 16 years old, or the permit's 16 years old, so it doesn't have that end date. So that's why we're here today, just to set an end date. The people that are, most of the people that are here, at least the abutters, know the situation that we've had a couple timelines that Joanne has provided and Jamie have provided. And this is kind of to set those timelines in stone, saying this is, you know, this is how long you have to finish the project. So Jamie, we did have a question about exact, or what the three-year, was it three years from March? Was it three years to the end of the year? What was the, what was the understanding when you sent that original recommendation?
Oh, can you hear me, Paul?
Yes, we can.
Oh, fantastic. So I was envisioning, you know, 2022, 2023, and 2024. So the permit would extend December 31st, 2024.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and we did talk about a few other things. We talked about putting a condition in place that no blasting takes place on the weekends, no hammering takes place on the weekends. And we also talked about some sort of notification system with respect to when we are going to blast. So if we could incorporate that into the conditions as well, that would go a long way for the abutters. And Joanne is more than happy to accommodate.
Yes, I recall it was to extend the notification to at least the 300-foot radius that would be routine.
This, this up on the screen was, Joanne had sent, I think last night, Jamie had sent today, this morning, or yesterday afternoon, just kind of a monthly breakdown, I think, for this year. And for the applicants that are either, for the, I should say, for the neighbors that are either here or virtual, you know, if you'd like to look at this, because I know you can't see it well up there, you can ask Mike and he can forward it to you at a later date. Basically, it's just a summary of when they anticipate doing certain things. There was a note in the prior conversation about blasting isn't anticipated to happen again until winter time when windows are closed. That's correct, Jamie? Or Joanne?
Yes, that's correct.
Perfect.
And you've mentioned no hammering on the weekends, is that would be the rock crushing activity?
Yeah, we hope to. Sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah. We don't crush or hammer or blast on the weekend.
Okay.
We don't, so there may be some potential issues also with dust in dry conditions whenever the rock crushing activity is occurring. So we'd bring that also to, just the attention that whoever's doing the activity would be during those dry conditions to water down appropriately the area to mitigate dust.
Absolutely.
Also, just to clarify, and I think I had Mike look this up too, about the hours, construction hours that's in the code.
Yeah, I talked with Mark, the building commissioner, this afternoon. There's another, there's several different sections, but no construction noise from 6:00 PM to 7:00 AM. There's another section of the city code that says no loud or, I forget the term, like obnoxious disruptive noise between, outside of 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and 8:00 to 7:00 on Saturday, and not at all on Sunday.
Okay.
You could impose a condition that's more, I imagine, more restrictive than what is in the city code, given a particular location, you know, how, you know, past.
Well, and the applicant mentioned there shouldn't be any crushing activity on the weekend?
Yes, they just said no crushing, hammering, or blasting on the weekends.
On the weekend.
Yep.
In that regard. Of course, you know, construction with plumbing and all these other types of contractors that are within.
Right, they'd have to follow the code as far as decibels and time of work and all that sort of stuff.
Correct.
If they were doing any of that work.
So I just want to make sure that we just mention that out there to the public about what the current criteria is for work hours. So if there's issues with the work hours, they can call the appropriate department regarding that. There's also been some acknowledgement as well as, yes, there's a lot of material leaving the site from the rock crushing activity, so that they can continue to try to meet the elevations for the plan. So that is unexpected to continue to occur. Is that correct?
Yes.
Some, yes, some material will be removed.
Okay.
Hey, we'll get to public comment. We'll get there. Don't worry.
We're just trying.
Oh, she said, yes, some material has to leave the site.
Yes.
And it was, and it was brought to, just so people know, I did also talk to a couple of engineering surveying friends of mine, and they basically said the same thing, that in order to meet site grades, you have to remove material in a lot of cases. Sometimes you have to bring in material. We're going to hear from a development later that they're anticipating bringing 7,000 cubic yards in to meet the grades that they have to meet. So it's always a delicate balance between what you need to take off and what you need to bring in. The, the understanding that I believe, and Joanne, I'm going to leave this question, I suppose, at you. The understanding that we wanted to make clear was the purpose of the exporting of materials isn't solely for profit. It's solely to meet site grades.
No, unfortunately, I'm not making profit, but if you could please send my name to that gentleman who needs Phil.
Yeah.
Please give me a call.
If anyone needs Phil.
She was saying, if people need Phil, she was saying, if people need Phil, let me know. She's not making money off it. That's what she was saying.
We're not making money off it. It's the cost of fuel. It's mainly just to try to get the project done.
Okay.
All right. So this is a, this is a public hearing. We're going to take some public comment. We're going to ask you to come up to the podium.
State your name and address for the record, please.
For the record, so that.
Mark Christian. I live at 71 Bennett Road. I'm in Abutter. I have a few problems. One is, I've watched these meetings and she says that abutters have been notified of blasting. That's never happened. I've been living there 27 years. Never have I been notified of the blasting. We talked about material leaving the site. I followed trucks to the Groton New Arts Center. I followed them to Benson Street. And I sat on the wall, which I abut, and she's taken three to four 18-wheelers an hour, eight days, five days a week, eight hours a day. So there are hundreds of trucks leaving there in a week. And now, in the last month, they brought in a rock crusher. So before, we had drilling, blasting, then jackhammering, and then sifting. Now we have an onsite rock crusher, which runs eight hours a day, five days a week. I understand that it has to come to an end, but we've certainly upped the ante. The noise now is worse than ever. And the blasting, I've had hands on my clock fall off. We've called the mayor. I've had Mr. O'Hare follow these trucks to Benson Street, because I wanted a city official to tell me that I wasn't making this up. I followed these trucks all over the place. So that's all I have to say. This, I watch these meetings sometimes and we talk hours about chickens, about people parking their truck with lettering on the side. I have a rock crusher next door. It has to stop somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you for your.
Thanks, Mark.
Yes, sir. Please come to the podium.
Hal Melanson, 13 Bennett Road. Unfortunately, I'll probably overlap a little bit. I'll try not to. But my first question is, as of today, what is allowed on Saturdays and Sundays for a site like this?
As of today, on Saturdays, they can do whatever the city code allows them. Once we make a vote and they've agreed to no crushing, hammering, or blasting on Saturdays or Sundays, they won't do that.
So Sundays, no work is allowed by.
No crushing, hammering, or blasting.
Well, it says no work on Sundays, even.
Oh, it says that, oh, Sunday, oh, Sundays, I'm sorry.
Sundays right now.
I thought you were talking about Saturdays. Yeah, Sunday, city code doesn't allow it, so.
Presently.
Okay, the inconsistencies are amazing. Mary Ellen, Mark, and John and I were walking in the woods on Sunday, this past Sunday, and there was an excavator running. So where, who enforces the law?
Building inspector.
Okay.
Nobody was on site.
No, please, don't.
Don't respond.
Joanne and Jamie, I will let you guys know when we need comment. Go ahead.
I have pictures. I have a video of it. So if somebody's not in agreement, I will show you on my phone. So, you know, this, this meeting around 2006 at the old City Hall regarding this huge expansion of Woodlands Estate, I believe all the abutters were present at the time, along with many other neighbors. Maybe Iron Hill Farm was not there. I don't remember. But the general cry from the neighborhood was that this is too big of a project for this rural neighborhood. And the amount of ledge on the site and the truck traffic were general concerns. On June 21, 2006, 40 units somehow was granted by the planning board. Now we're looking for more units. Don't agree with that?
Just to be clear, there's no, we have, there's no expansion. We have not talked about adding anything to the original permit approval. I just, I just want everyone to be clear. There's never been a conversation, nor is this decision today, any more units that have already been approved.
Okay, so the, over, I won't say the 16 years, but at least 14 of those years, it's an extreme nuisance with total disregard of the residents of the neighborhood. The equipment noise, blasting, and relentless hammer drilling has been damaged the peace of the neighborhood. And when I say hammer drilling, it's not a little jackhammer. It's an, you know, at least a 10-foot boom on an excavator with a four-foot drill, and it's hammering, constant. And, you know, my, my mother is 90 years old. Pamela's mother is 90 years old. And this is, my mother is on her back porch, not at the, not, not at the stone wall, but this is what she hears. So we know that City Hall probably heard some hammer drilling. This is day in and day out, all day long. It will make you mental. You know, at the last planning board meeting, Joanne was asked how much material has been taken off-site. Apparently, that's not an issue, but she said no material has been taken off-site.
That got clarified.
It got clarified. Oh, yeah, right. She remembered that, that years ago, they took it off-site. But Mark and I followed trucks, Doug Cave's followed trucks, everybody's followed trucks. No material's been taken off-site. How?
Do you have any additional?
Oh, I have a lot.
We do have a limit on time, so if you want, like.
It'll be less than two minutes.
Okay, about two minutes.
Okay. So the, as we said, we followed, followed trucks to Ride More. We followed trucks to out in Groton. And she also was questioned about what happens when blasting occurs. And her answer was, every time blasting occurs, a survey is done and the residents are notified. That sounds awesome. That happened one time in probably the first year, the first time they blasted. Abutters were never notified ever after that. And I'm sure that I have cracks in my barn. My mother has a split down her living room ceiling right now. So all of this stuff will be addressed at some point. You know, I'm trying to skip over what's already been talked about. But basically, in ending, the inconsistencies are amazing. How could she possibly be granted another special permit with all of these statements directed toward the planning board that simply were not true? Please put an immediate halt to this violation of our right to enjoy our peaceful homes. Thank you. And it is nice to see everybody in person.
Thanks, Hal. So I do just want to, because I understand this is kind of confusing how we're, what we're here for today. So we're not granting a new special permit. What we're trying to do is because the special permit 16 years ago was granted with no end date, meaning this could go on forever, we're setting an end date so that we know it's going to be completed. That's what we're here for today. We're here to add an end date so that we all know we can finish this and hopefully put it behind us sooner rather than later. So we're not adding a new special permit, we're not creating a special permit. We're merely. a new special permit, we're not creating a special permit. We're merely acting on what's already in existence, saying, we're setting an end date so that there's, there's a definitive timeframe. You have to be done, you have to be out of there, you have to be completed. Because that wasn't done in '06, because honestly, more than a few years ago, that wasn't the, the way things were done. And now we're trying to get back to that, where we say, you know, we approve a project, we say you start within two years, you end within five years, and that's it. Back then, that wasn't done. So that's what we're trying, we're trying to rectify an issue that happened 16 years ago. So that's, that's what we're here for.
Statutorily, it's all about beginning construction for a permit. There is no requirement to have an end date. So that's typically a condition that can be added to a permit.
And because we've learned things from projects like this in Game On, we've now learned when we do special permits, and I was just telling one of our applicants later tonight, that one of the things we'd like to ask now is, are you going to remove material from the site? If you are, approximately how much? Those are questions we ask now that we didn't back then. So it's unfortunate, but again, what we have now is, we have a special permit that's in existence that allows them to do this. We're trying to make sure that it ends as fast as possible. That's our goal today.
And as well as trying to mitigate what can be mitigated at this point, regarding at least some hours of activity, or at least when blasting occurs, and up the notification.
I am going to, I am going to ask the applicant, too, to, to resurvey Abutters and properties that are within 300 feet. So they'll have plenty of time. If they're not going to blast till next winter, they'll have plenty of time to do now and then, to get all the, you know, a new pre-blast survey done, so that people that are abutting are re-notified, they are, properties are re-looked at to make sure that, that, that those aren't direct issues. So that's going to be one of the things that we're going to talk about in this as well. So.
I have a comment.
Yeah.
Sorry. My name is Herlen Jamie, and I'm a representative of the Community Development and Planning Department. And we actually have some feedback from Counselor Marissa Fleming, that she wanted the board and the Abutters to know. And this is quote, "I wish to voice my opposition to any special permit that is longer than a year, preferably less is best. The Ringe Road residents have had more than their share of noise, blasting, and disruption in the rural residential, in their rural residential lives. Please do not approve any special permit that is longer than a year from now," end quote.
Thank you. I do have, oh, go ahead. Yep. I do have some people that are virtual that have hands raised, but I'll let people that are here obviously speak first. Because I don't know what order people raise hands in.
And it's okay for you to say, you know, what Hal said, or anything else as well regarding... It is also okay to say, anybody who else have previously spoken, you agree with, you know, the similar concerns.
I want to reiterate my concerns. I'm Phil Larkin. I own a house in an acre and a half on 11 Bennett Road, which abuts the project. I live at 1070 Ashby West Road. In 2006, I was aware of the project, and at the time, I wasn't aware that it was going to be such a large project. Now, 2022, I'm not sure what they, what they're allowed to do, but there's, they're approaching 40 units there now. And on her billboard advertising the proposals, they're looking at 50, I counted like 50-plus units. Presently, right now, between my house at Bennett Road, and my property line between that is a running brook. It runs almost all year long. It's running pretty heavy right now. Beyond my property line is a mountain the size of Mount Wackatic. I know it's an exaggeration, but it is tall as the ceiling and much wider than this room. Zero erosion control. As Mr. Christian reiterated, or mentioned, they talk about chickens and so forth, and I know my neighbor had to spend a lot of money on an engineering erosion control, and there was no erosion. I see zero in this project. The noise level is the worst of all. It is constant, loader, rock crushers, sifting equipment, and that's the least of it. There is the siren announcing the blasting, and then the jackhammers. Who in this room would want to listen to that all day long, five days a week? I live beyond that, through the woods, probably a mile and a half, two miles away, I can hear it. I hear, I hear the blast. And I, someone mentioned, you're going to try to mitigate it? There's no, take a drive up there and see the ledge. There's no mitigating that. It's going to be a problem. Again, 16 years is way too much. It was a mistake then, and let's not make the mistake anymore. And someone said, you, I believe, they said, you know, we're going to try to get this done in three years, sooner or later? Three years is not sooner or later. Fleming's got it right. This should, this should, this project should end. She's got 40 units, and she wants more. That's why I look at it. One more thing. Rural Residential in Pittsburgh, the purpose of it is to establish a, to establish and preserve a quiet rural neighborhood of one-family homes and no other uses, and make sure they're compatible with and convenient to the residents. It's not happening. And I think for this board to extend this thing after 16 years, what the neighbors have gone through, I think is a travesty. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, go ahead. Yep, you can come on.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for having us, and thanks for having this open forum for us to attend. Mary Ellen Mara Christian and I live at 71 Bennett Road. And I don't want to repeat everything, but I certainly on record agree with what has been set up to this point, and I agree with the concerns that have been, have been noted. I can just add a little bit. I think we've already gone through the process of, of work being done there, being the drilling, the blasting, the jackhammering, the large rock being crushed into the rock crusher now, and it being delivered directly to job sites. We've got that clear. I cannot figure out, and I still don't have an answer, is how this is permissible, that this area is a working quarry. Under definition, it is an open pit mine on this residential site. It's a residential property. I cannot express, along with the others here tonight, how extremely noisy, dusty, and disturbing this jackhammering and crushing causes on a regular basis. It does affect your mental health. It's, everyone can say that I have, Mark and I own the entire east side of the park, and up a little bit on the north side. And you can just say, oh, it's just woods over there. It doesn't matter. On the plans that I've seen, I see no setbacks. I am, it's extremely, it's not just the woods. It's my yard, and I walk it every day. And it's, it's terribly disturbing to listen to it, because I have, I work from, I work outside. I'm not in an office anywhere. So I have to hear it all the time. But getting on to my, my list here, the blasting, there's certain things that I think we need to work, to, to think about, as well as the potential harm to our foundations. But I am concerned about the integrity of the dam at the reservoir across the street from this blasting. I think that there's a bridge right at Nigel Court, where the trucks are driving over it, and in and out every time they go over there. There is a bridge at, on Ringe Road by Scott Road there, and that bridge has weight limits posted. And I can only assume that those weight limits are posted for safety reasons. And the trucks that are going over that regularly, they're over twice the amount of the weight limit that's posted on that sign. I feel this is a very important public safety issue, and along with the impact it has, just the whole project on the environment and the wildlife there. I think it's been noted on how we watched all the trucks leave nine days after the last board meeting that you have, where it seemed that material was not going to be leaving going forward, that it was going to be used. And it's still being done today. I wanted to, I'm trying not to repeat. I did want to thank, there were efforts made to drain water away from our property, our property that Mark and I own, causing harm to our trees. As the board knows, that there's these two huge mounds of dirt next to our line. They are, they do consist of many, many stumps, and it caused, there's no, nothing holding this dirt pileup. And it caused a pooling of water there that went into our property, causing some damage to our trees and killing some trees. Thank you for, Joanne and Jamie, they did take a scoop, like they dug a ditch. And the water is being taken away from our site, but just please note that it is pooling again, just so that you know, I go up there all the time. But I do want to point out that this is certainly not a permanent fix, and I'm hoping that a more permanent solution will be included in their latest plan. So I do ask that this planning board consider the neighbors' concerns before granting any special permit. Consider, oh, I need my glasses. Consider limiting or denying any plans for additional homes, and please, no more mining material on-site. I still can't get an answer of how that quarrying and mining can be done on that rural residential site. And if for some reason, this board feels that a permit is, is granted, or can be granted, please limit the time to, to, I would like it be done now. If you have to put a time, six months. Why three years? I know that something has to be done, because we can't finish today, because I want my water problem fixed permanently, before it causes any more damage to, so, and I realize that the, right now, the road just ends at the last trailer, so I'm sure some kind of a road system, some kind of a turnaround has to be done. So I can understand that it's probably not realistic for everything to be done or completed today, because something has to be done so trucks can turn around there and get out. So I think that's pretty much what I have today. Oh, the renewing, just so you know, that Dave Saunders is the blaster since February of 2019, and the fire department told me that the permit is till July of '22, so that I would please consider that that permit is not continued, and that if blasting is done, that it should, the permit should not be active immediately, or at least it should not stay active till July.
Do you have the blasting permit?
Yep.
That's the fire department. That's not our board.
Okay, okay. So I've talked to them.
Yep. Good point, though.
So please, like I said, please permanently fix the water problem, please, that causes on our side, and allow the nice folks living in the park and the neighboring families to live once again in peace. Because 15 years, 16 years, this is done. I don't understand why they can have, I know you need an end date, board, but another three years is just impossible for us. It's just not acceptable. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mary Ellen.
Thank you for your comments. Is also some folks online?
Mm-hmm. Go to Commissioner Erickson first. Nick, you have your hand raised. Was that for this or something else?
It was for this. Thanks, Paul.
Yep.
So we've already, already established that the blasting has produced, crushed rock that's being trucked offsite. But one of the issues that we're having is that, that, that rock is being trucked over the Ringe Road Bridge, which has a posted weight limit on it. And Mary Ellen just kind of described that issue. So one of the restrictions that we've asked planning board to impose is to make sure that any trucking of material offsite goes around this bridge, so they have to use Ashby West and connect to other parts of the city. If the trucking continues, we're going to have to talk to the state police and let them know that this is happening. The weight limits are posted for a reason, and we have our water division up there. That's housed at the Fulu, Fulu Water Treatment Plant at 1200 Ringe Road. So if that bridge ends up failing because of the amount of weight that's being consistently trucked over this bridge, you know, that creates a problem for the city. So we're trying to avoid that. So we, we'd ask that all that trucking of material be done, you know, around the bridge posting, and not in violation of the bridge posting.
After Mary Ellen said that, I already had a permit condition, that truck weight limits cannot exceed existing posted limits. So they'll have to figure out, you know, less weight in the trucks, or... No, no, I know. I'm saying, I'm saying from now, permit condition will be that trucks cannot go over a bridge that they're not illegally allowed to go over, so.
But how, how is that going to be enforced? Like, obviously, nobody's reading the sign as it is, and now this permit condition is suddenly going to make people obey?
So once you make it a permit condition, if it's found that a truck does it, and we have any evidence, we can find them.
It doesn't even...
We can't now.
It doesn't even need to be a permit condition. It's a regular requirement right now.
It is what it is, yeah.
It is. So we're just bringing that forward so that everyone's aware of this, and please ensure of it.
Once you make it a permit condition, the zoning enforcement officer can find him too, though.
So we have that...
Well, does he have to sit outside and wait for a truck to drive by?
No, but, no, but Nick could find out, or the Abutters could find out, or we could, Council Fleming lives right there. We, we could find out if it's, if it's, if they're still going over an area they're not supposed to.
Yes, we can get that.
My point is, that's not something usually this board controls.
Right.
If we add it to part of this, this decision, that, I say decision, we're just doing a modification. If we add it to this modification, now our zoning enforcement officer might have a control as well.
Right. And so just to add, the, the point of bringing this up was that I was just made aware of the situation today. So I've talked with Sergeant Boudreau at the Pittsburgh Police. We're going to talk to the state police to make sure that this is enforced. So I'm advising the applicant here to seek an alternate route for that trucking of material offsite. Otherwise, there's going to be a problem.
I mean, realistically, the, the goal is to limit truck traffic offsite, period. But we'll get to the applicant in a minute. Nick, did you have anything else?
Nope, that's it. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
I do want to, I can, at least speak to a piece about the, the question about the open quarry piece. Earth removal in conjunction with the permit is not considered a separate activity. So it's not, as long as the earth removal is done in conjunction with the permit that allows earth, earth removal for construction, it's not considered a, let's say, separate commercial business or a quarry.
Okay. So the, so the processing of the rock can be done on-site and delivered by two job sites? I mean, I understand that material needs to be removed. I get that. I mean, this is, this is...
But does it need to be processed?
So it's a problem we've had before. Game On did it. It's a problem we've had before in other rural residential areas. It's, it's not something we, other than the noise ordinance, it's not, I mean, it's not something that, it's usually part of site development. Now, I'm not saying that's good. I disagree with it as well, but it's usually a factor of site development when they deal with rock. Game On just did it for five years, or however long it was.
So do they question, instead of taking the material away from this job site so that they can do the work on the job site? I get that. But, so the whole processing, so you have the end result, you have big boulders that are going right to Ridmore, and this crust dome going somewhere else, that all can be done right there at rural residential?
There's nothing in our ordinance that prohibits it. There's nothing in our ordinance that I know of that prohibits it. But that's not, that's a, that's a larger, I guess, procedural question that we'd have to change how the city handles that? Yeah, I mean, I...
But that's what the code says about earth removal. It can be done in conjunction with, and any building permit.
I mean, I agree with you.
Not considered a separate activity.
Or you could consider maybe going forward, so not other neighbors have to deal with this, is that the rock, the removal be more, define that better. Please. That it's not, removal is one thing, and the board, but I think that the processing of the material right there on the site, on a rural residential area in particular, we, you know, if I, we fish at this place on the Cape, there's a quarry there. It's the same process that's being done at our neighborhood, but people move there, they know they're moving next to a quarry. We didn't know we were going to be moving and living next to a quarry.
I hear.
Thank you.
I hear it. It's a delicate balance that we're trying. We're trying to get the project done. The biggest issue we have, aside from the fact that the project exists in and of itself now, and has an indefinite timeframe, what we're trying to do now is, we're trying to, to confine that to a, to a definitive timeframe. confine that to a definitive timeframe and make sure that all the infrastructure gets done, so that we don't cause long-term runoff issues. I mean, we still need, we still need, all, everything still needs to conform to the plan so that it drains to the appropriate areas, that the roads are finished and completed. I don't care about her finishing her pad sites, but in order to get to the back end of that road where all of the grades meet, the road needs to get done, which needs to go through that giant, I've been there, I've been there probably 15 times since our last meeting. I was there this morning, I was there yesterday morning. I, I try and drive up there every possible chance I get, and I, I understand exactly what you guys are talking about as far as the size of the material that's there. I've seen the mound quite a few times at this point, and it's, for our board, it's how do we put an end date on it? How do we make sure the project can get far enough to get at least the drainage completed so that it doesn't cause off-site issues? And if we get done, you know, if we get to, if, we were talking end of 2024, which isn't three years, it's two and a half years now, if we get to the end of 2024 and the road, the pad sites aren't done, I don't care. We're, at that point, it's, project's done, infrastructure has to be completed by that point, and that's gonna be one of my permit conditions, that the end of 2024, regardless of how many houses are there, we're done, the, all the drainage and all the final grades have to be met. And, and, and that's, that's entirely what we're trying to do. And, and the point, the problem I see here is, it can't be done in six months. It can't be done in a year. It's just not going to be. It's just not, it's not, it's not feasible to get, you see, you see how much material's up there. They still have a lot of work to do, and that's not a good thing. I wish this ended 10 years ago, but we're trying to solve an issue that we became aware of principally three months ago, but I know it's been going on for a year or two, at least that it's been brought to our attention. Now, I know you guys have been dealing with it for 10 years, but that's, that's, again, that's a completely different thing. I've, I've heard things, but we've only started talking about this a few months ago. So that's what we're trying to solve now.
The only thing I would say to that is, this is a complete change in strategy. Until now, it's been a pay-as-you-go, you know, one house and go, one house and go. So now, it's really not our fault that she's three years and past, and 19 more. You should've, you know, her whole plan, not made...
Right, but how do, but how do we change the past mark? That's the problem. That's what we're trying to solve.
We're trying to, we gotta take some additional...
Yeah, and we have people that haven't spoke yet that I, that I want to speak. So let me start with Katie DeChamp. Katie? It's all, just hit the...
Hi.
There you go.
Thanks. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I'm Kathy DeChamps, 1307 Ridge Road, and my husband...
I'm sorry, I read it wrong.
That's all right, not a problem. And Ron DeChamps, we're here, we're abutters, and we were, we've been here since bought the house in 1984, and never thought that we would be living near a construction site this long. So, I do understand that, you know, the baseline, but I, you know, we're not even talking about, you know, I can understand the older people having, you know, they can't even sleep. What about the person that needs to sleep during the day? Or, you know, they're ill. They are not able to do that. Our pets are traumatized when the blasting goes off. And we had a shepherd that was deeply affected by that, and now we have another puppy, and I have to tell her, you know, calm down. And I agree with everything. Our neighbors on Bennett Road have said, this is unacceptable that we have allowed this to happen. And it's, enough is enough, and we need to put a timeline, not 2024. Do the drainage, do that, you know, I would say, six months.
Shut it down.
Shut it down. I mean, the end date, that's our recommendation. You want to say anything?
Okay, thank you for your comment.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so, just because this might answer some questions, I know you guys still have more, and we'll, we'll get to them. I think Jamie might want to answer something, I'm guessing. Jamie?
Thank you, Paul. Just two things. When the, when the people in the audience are speaking, if they can go up to the podium, I can't hear their comments.
You have to come to the podium.
I would love it if they could go up and speak in the microphone, so I could hear the comments, so then maybe I can answer them in the end.
Thank you, yeah, that's my fault. We're just getting used to this now, Jamie.
Yep, that's fine. But one comment I heard, that, I can't remember her name, but it's Mike's wife, the abutter in the back where the cul-de-sac is. We have a permanent catch basin that's shown on our site plan that was approved back in 2006, that is going to take care of any ponding that does occur on the abutting property and on our property. There's a, there's a low area that's shared in common with the abutter and our property, and a catch basin is gonna be installed, a permanent basin. So they will, that is the permanent solution to the drainage problem that, that people have been talking about. I just wanted to make everybody aware of that. I thought I did, I thought I made that...
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Go ahead, Jamie.
Perfect. So if you go to the end of the cul-de-sac, you can see a catch basin along the lot line at the low area.
Right here?
Right there. Exactly right. That's a permanent catch basin that's gonna be installed. Once we get these giant piles of stone and loom removed, the drainage will be installed, and that's a permanent catch basin at the low area that is shared in common with the abutting property and our property. So no ponding of water will occur. That's a permanent solution.
Mary Ellen, I, I sent you this, right? Like, a month ago? These were the site plans that Mike had sent me. If, if not, I can send them to you again. Just send me an email tomorrow. I can send you these again, but this was one of the two-page site plans. I'm pretty sure I forwarded it to you.
Show the...
Okay. Well, just send me an email tomorrow, I can send, or to Mike, we can send it. Jamie, just for clarification, and again, we're not talking about more units, we're not talking about changing the number of units, that has, that's not part of this. How many, do you know, and I, I can tag Joanne in if you don't, do you know what the total unit count is, from the original approval?
Good question. I, I started counting units when that question came up, and I, I think I counted 44 units.
Yeah, I got 44 on the thing, but I didn't know if the old ones were part of that. Hold on, let me get, see if I can get Joanne in here, 'cause I, 'cause I'm, I know, I know people are curious about that.
Yeah, I'm seeing, some of them are labeled existing, so we might have to add a few more.
Jo, yeah, do you know, Joanne?
It's a total of 54 with 64.
54, 54.
Homes that were operated.
So, so, so there's 44 labeled on this plan. You were counting the unlabeled, I guess, existing old trailers?
There were 18, 18 original. We have a total of 54 was what was approved.
Okay.
Plus, plus a wrecked building, community center.
But, but that's not getting done?
It will later, at the end of the, when we get to the end.
Okay. If you, if you can fit it within the three years. If not, do that last, 'cause I honestly don't care if that gets done.
So I was looking at part of the plan that was submitted, this question is for Joanne and Jamie. There appears to be the, in like June, still a hammer is needed for utilities, but then it doesn't begin again until September, so is the proposal not to have any hammering conducted during the summer months of...
No.
July and August?
Unfortunately, unfortunately, as we install utilities, the whole site is rock, and sometimes when you're putting in, digging down with the water and sewer laterals, you'll get rock that needs to be hammered.
So I'm sorry, what was the, there was, there's, there's no hammering this summer? Is that what you said?
No, there'll be hammering, and hammering is not gonna stop. It'll just stop for the crushing. Right now, when we, we're hammering because we have to break the rock down that was blasted to run it through the crusher, because it has to be two feet or smaller to go through the crusher. But when we install utilities, the water, sewer, drainage laterals, occasionally, or, you know, throughout the project, we get additional ledge that's in the ground that needs to be hammered in order to install the water-sore drain laterals as designed for the plan.
Okay.
Hammering will go on as necessary throughout the project.
Okay. Hold on, we have, Council of Fleming wants to say something, so hold on one second. Go ahead, Council of Fleming, whenever you're ready.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can now. Yep.
Okay, sorry, I couldn't get on earlier, I was having a problem, I'm on vacation, but I know you read my statement. I do however, want to correct something. I became a councilor five years ago, and it was at that point that I started receiving phone calls from the constituents up at that area. And I actually sat there one day in one of my constituents' homes to feel...
Uh-oh.
...daily. And I did bring this to the attention of the mayor and Mike Ahara and the building department the first year I was elected. So while you're just hearing about it for the first time, that's what caught my attention. So I wanted to...
I don't want to make it seem like Mike didn't tell us. We, we had heard there were complaints. It hadn't, it hadn't raised to the point that it was something we had to address until recently.
Okay, all right. So, no, thank you. I was just able to get on, I was watching it, and then I was able to patch in through the wifi in this hotel.
Perfect. Thank you, councillor.
Let me speak again.
Okay.
Yes.
Oh, please come up to the...
Yeah, come right up to the, because they can't hear you.
There's three comments. Mr. Erickson mentioned transporting the material up Ashby West Road, which is a rural road through the watershed. It's very rural. The first hill is about a half a mile long, so you just, just listen to these trucks coming up the hill and then passing everybody's house all day long. So you're gonna expand the annoyance of the neighborhood. That's one issue. The other issue is, you mentioned this can't be done in six months. I think a professional needs to be called in and find out why it can be finished in six months. It seems like there's more concern about her project than there is about the neighborhood, the rural neighborhood. And the concerns, I, I have a feeling that everybody's listening and concerned about what the neighbors are going through, but I think the interest is in her favor.
Thank you, Phil. Any other questions? Yep.
John Benoit, I'm at 43 Billings Road. I'm probably, I don't know, probably not even a quarter mile away, but I'll tell you what, from what Mark will tell you, you'd be surprised how loud it is at my house. I'm not gonna say it's upsetting where I am, and, you know, I've been there for three years. I started building my house, and I always wondered what all that banging was. Never even knew until in the last few months, Mark and his wife were telling me about the, the rock crushing going on over at the, the, you know, the trailer park. And then on Sunday, Hal mentioned that on Sunday, there was equipment running. And yes, there was equipment running. I don't know what they were doing, but that was the first time I took a walk through the woods with Mark and his wife to see what's, you know, see what the project looks like. To me, I mean, I've been in construction for a long time, it looked like Pandolph Perkins or Keating's. I mean, I'm not saying on that grand of a scale, but as Mary Ellen says, is that, you know, it's, it's a rock crushing operation. I mean, yes, they have to prepare to get, to take it out, but I'm just saying that when I built my house, we had construction equipment, Howie Sumner did all the excavating, and, you know, this went on for six months, almost a year at my house. I can't imagine how my neighbors would put up with it for, you know, nine months, I mean, when you do construction like that, there's, there's, there's an end in sight. You know, the guy next to me, they built their house, and the next one built their house, but it took a few months. But this has gone on for years and years. The hammering is, is pretty, like I say, I'm not saying that it's, it's all that offensive from as far as I am, but it's, it's very substantial. I can only imagine what it's like when you're, you know, on that road, you know? And so I just, I just, I'm here in support of my neighbors, my friends, and I just, I just think it's pretty, I just think it's pretty extensive. And again, I want to reiterate that, yes, they are operating equipment on Sunday. Maybe they're doing maintenance or whatever, but in construction, we're not allowed to do certain things on the weekend. You know, I mean, I've always been under, under the impression it's eight to five, or seven to five during the week, Saturday maybe a little bit, but Sunday, certainly in Leominster anyway.
That shouldn't happen here either.
Yeah, it shouldn't be running equipment on Sunday.
I agree.
So, like I say, I just wanted to support my, my friends, my neighbors, and share my opinion.
Thank you, John.
All right. Need further online public comment?
Um, yeah.
Who hasn't already commented?
No.
Okay. Any additional comments at this time? Yes, Mary Ellen?
Yep.
Sure.
When you're considering all of this, we talk about the no work on the weekends, I, and I must, I must not have listened correctly, is that I thought holidays were included in that, so could you just consider that as well? Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ellen. Kathy, go ahead. Did you have something else you wanted to add?
No, I would, I, I don't realize I did...
Oh, sorry, you had your hand raised, that's why I clicked on you.
Yeah, sorry about that.
No, no worries.
We're all set.
All right, thank you.
I live...
Do you want to come up to the podium if you'd like to speak? Can you?
I'm a little shy.
Well, they, yeah, I know, but they can't hear you.
I know, it's important. I live directly behind the trailer park, and she put a huge wall, a brick wall, where there used to be beautiful woods. I grew up there, then I lived on the Cape for many years, came back. My mother's still alive, she's 90 years old, and we noticed that we never had flooding in our backyard, except for when the snow melted. And there's a huge pipe running out of that brick wall, and we don't want to use our backyard as her estuary to get rid of the water. That should be piped along with all the other water that's coming through there. And I know it's affecting our property because we had warped doors all summer long in our home, and we've never in the history had warped doors. Every single door was warped. You couldn't close it properly downstairs. We have a family...
Which property are we talking about?
My property.
No, what, yeah, what's the name?
Oh, I'm sorry, 1361 Ridge Road.
What's the name on it, though? I'm looking at just names, not address...
It's Papouti. I'm sorry, Papouti.
The reason why I'm asking, the reason why, it's fine, the reason why I'm asking is I'm looking at the site plan, which I can pull up so everyone can see. Because there's going to be, and I don't know, I can ask Jamie in a minute, there's going to be, if you look right up there, so your property's right here.
Yes.
So there's, there's an outlet right here. That outlet eventually connects to the detention basin? So I don't know if it has connected yet, but that's, that outlet...
It hasn't yet.
That drain should drain into the detention basin.
Where is that detention basin?
Well, you see it now, it's the, it's the, it's the pit they have on the left when you drive in over the bridge.
Oh.
That's supposed to hold and drain water to, to, to take all the runoff off the site.
Do you want to ask Jamie when that's...
Well, then what's the water doing in our wooded area? We have these beautiful trees. I don't want to lose those beautiful trees. That's the only buffer we have left.
I will definitely, because Mary Ellen and Mark and I have talked about this in the past, and Jamie and Joanne are aware, I will definitely add that to the list of things they should look into. One of the permit conditions, one of the new conditions I was gonna add to the existing permit as part of this is to make sure that there's no excess runoff onto any of the neighbor's sites.
Exactly. And just one more thing if I may add. We, our house is surrounded by rock fences that have probably been there since the revolution. It kind of divides our neighborhood. It's a very old, lovely, as we say, rural neighborhood. And in the process of her drainage and the, the rock piles coming down the hill, she has destroyed that one part of the rock fence. She was made aware of it, this was almost two, three years ago, and she said, oh, we'll get to it, and they never did. Plus, the men left their equipment on our side of the property, and a lot of shrubbery Plus, the men left their equipment on our side of the property and a lot of shrubbery and bushes and mess when they were cutting down bushes and trunks and branches, and never bothered to remove the mess that they made, plus their equipment they decided to leave on our side. And then I had to put it on the other side. And I gave her a call way back in the beginning, about 15 years ago, and I said, can you give us a timeframe for the construction and completion? And she said, it's going to get done when it's going to get done, and hung up on me. And every time we try to talk with her, she just hangs up. She hasn't been very friendly if she wants to be our neighbor. I have wonderful neighbors our whole lives, Hal and Mary Ellen and Mark. We all get along. We work together. But she seems to think she's above us all and treats us like, well, too bad. And her trailers are right up. There should be a buffer. They're right up on our property line.
I just asked, is the rock wall on your property or is it on the?
I'm sorry?
Is the rock wall you were referring to on your property?
Yes, on our property. It's a mess now. The rock, I'm sorry. The rocks, as you can see, I've just, we've had it. The rocks are strewn everywhere, and it used to be a lovely little fence. I used to play in those woods, and we used to play on that rock fence. And now it's just here, there, and everywhere. And we certainly didn't do it. So, I mean, you can tell I'm very annoyed. And my poor mother, the bang, 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 it's just constant. And I can understand for maybe one or two years, but it's been going on for at least 15 years with no end in sight because she won't give us a timeframe of completion. And I think we have that right. I mean, we pay our taxes. My mother's been there for over 60 years. And it used to be beautiful. And thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comment. And again, that is why we're here tonight, is to try to put some transparency to the situation and what the expectations are and set a timeframe for completion.
Let me, hold on, let me.
We have to stop very shortly because we've got three others.
No, no, I know. We have no more comments anyway.
Okay. Plans? All right. That being said, there's a lot of material in front of us this evening. We can deliberate. We can make, or hold off until even our next meeting to make a decision?
No, I mean, I think that the timeframe, just adding a timeframe is important. I don't disagree with the abutters that when we did this in '05 or '06, that there should have been a timeframe then. And had there been a timeframe then, and had there been consistent enforcement of that timeframe, we might not be here today or hopefully wouldn't be here today. That's a problem we can't solve. What we can do is we can add a timeframe today so that we know what the expectations are. We know what the end goal is. We know that the project hopefully can get done. And again, all I care about is that the infrastructure is done so that we don't have any site runoff, that we don't have any hazardous conditions, unsafe conditions. I don't care how many she builds. Quite honestly, if she finished today, that's fine. As long as the road's done, the infrastructure's done, everything's done. The problem is to get to the far end of the site, there's a significant amount of work to get to the end of the site, to get all of the road done and the infrastructure done and the drainage done according to the plan.
So let's take a last comment from the applicant.
Okay.
Between what they've heard this evening and the phasing plan that's been proposed, and can you also confirm the prioritization of like the drainage activities?
Joanne and or Jamie, if you have anything you'd like to add before we have a definitive conversation about this?
Well, I heard Mrs. Papouti's comments about the potential encroachment over the stone wall. That's something that is very concerning to me, and I'm happy to look into that in the next week or so and report back to Mrs. Papouti or report back to the planning board as well.
Thank you.
Can I just say one last thing?
Yep, one more.
I would just like to ask you, if you are comfortable, did you get a definitive answer on is we going to have jackhammering or not? Intimately, maybe. I mean, I just want you to please get a definitive answer. Is the jackhammering going to continue all summer? I think that was pretty, you know, evasive.
Yeah, let me see what, I think part of it was because it was cutting out because I had a problem. I didn't really follow.
Yeah, I cut my page in half, so.
So she does have May 2022 crushing, hammering, underground utilities, prep for one home. June, hammering as needed for utilities. Yeah, I mean, she hasn't listed every month, but, well, she hasn't listed differently in November, possible hammer versus hammer as needed for utilities. So I think, and Paula, correct me if I'm wrong, Joanne, certainly you can jump into this too. I'm pretty sure she said, yes, she was going to as long as they need it for the utilities to get the utility line done.
But it looks like it's continuing.
Because that is what.
That is.
Go ahead, Joanne.
That is correct. As needed.
What do you think the expectation is for as needed?
Well, unfortunately, you've been out to the site. It's one big rock. And we have run into spots where we may have to hammer to get the drainage line or the water sore or the electrical utilities in it.
Can you confirm if there's a prioritization to the finishing of the drainage?
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Can you confirm that the schedule prioritizes completion of the drainage?
Yes. No, I mean, we want to get this finished.
And I want to be clear with this too. Whatever the end date we set is, I don't envision a scenario where there's an extension to this end date. Meaning, at the end of the end date, if your pad sites aren't done, even if the pad sites are done, I don't think you're going to be able to put on more homes. You're going to have, at the end of this time period, you're going to have the infrastructure done. The roadway is as done as it needs to be. Again, if there's no houses at the end, it doesn't have to be paved. I really don't care. Jamie can talk to what needs to happen to make the site stable and adequate for drainage. But the prioritization, like Paula said, has to be for drainage and site grades. And beyond that, you know, if we get to December 2024 and you say, I have, you know, 10 more pads to do, I don't think you're going to get them done. I don't think they're going to be able to be done. So just so you know that. I just want you to know that now.
Can I ask a question, Paul? Just a clarification. If Joanne gets all the utilities installed, the roadway network paved 100%, all the pads done, and all she has left to do is construct the homes. Are you saying at the end of the three years, if all the site work is complete, stabilized, and signed off on, at the end of those three years, if a home or two is not installed, the planning board's not going to allow those homes to be erected?
What I was saying was if there's any work left to be done, then the work ceases. The project gets finished to just the drainage and grades, and no more houses get put on. If she has done everything before the date that we set here today, and she has pads prepped and there's no more construction material or construction work being done at all, then yeah, she can put houses on there. But that's only because they're prefab houses. That she can't, there's no more pouring of pads, no more creating infrastructure, utilities. It needs to be done by the time this date is set.
Yeah, I just wanted clarification. That's all.
Okay, thank you. No, hold on. We'll talk, we're deliberating now. Let's get, because we're never going to get to the end of this if we keep going back and forth. What? That's why we're trying to set a date here, Hal. That's what we're here for.
You know, it's not our fault that she has ledge. She knew she had ledge.
I understand. I know, I know.
Why do you always find words on ledges?
I understand.
All right. Does the board have enough information at this time to close the hearing?
Yes. Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay. Motion's been made to close the hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, deliberation. On, again, this is an amendment to the present special permit. This is not a new special permit. This is not adding any more construction to what's already been approved.
We are merely trying to rectify a situation that should have been rectified before by creating an end date that is both feasible for the project getting finished and as best we can to the neighbors. I think that there are some conditions I want to add to it, like we had talked about. First of all, and it should have gone without saying, no work on Sundays. No crushing, hammering, or blasting on the weekend at all, like the applicant has agreed to.
Or holidays.
Or, okay, or holidays. How do you define that? Federal holidays?
I'll say federal.
Federal holidays. Reserving properties that are either direct abutters or within 300 feet prior to any more blasting. Notifying residents every time you blast for a definitive time period, whether that be you're blasting on and off for a week, you let them know at the beginning of the week, whatever the case would be. Renotify if you blast a few times, you know, once a month, and then again, two months later, renotify again, let them know. Verify that no trucks or none of your construction vehicles are over any exceeded posted weight limits, particularly as Commissioner Erickson had said, the Scott Road Ring Road Bridge. Make sure that there's no excess water runoff from this site to any abuttered sites. Repair disturbed areas and damaged property line walls if you find them. And.
Re-blast survey prior to next winter.
Yeah, I said that. Resurvey properties prior to blasting and notify residents. So, plea breaths. And I said, abutting properties and properties within 300 feet because there might be some properties that are just outside either one of those. So I just wanted to be clear. Direct abutters or properties within 300 feet. Because I think that's the standard, unless we know of a different standard, but I'm pretty sure that was the standard we've heard in the past. And then I would just say, my suggestion would be hours of operation for any of the work you would be doing be between eight and five. Buy that one extra hour from seven to eight, which is, you know, people may be getting ready for work or whatever else. So that would be Monday to Friday, eight to five. And then I don't know what we have for code, Mike, for Saturday? It's different, though, right?
It was eight to, I believe it was eight to five.
Eight to five Saturday? That's our code?
And none on Sunday.
What's that?
None on Sunday.
Right, which we already, yeah. So, I mean, and we're already talking about no crushing, hammering, or blasting on the weekend, but in the event that they're, you know, hammering something with an actual physical hammer, I don't mean hammering the road, if they're doing construction work, that that be done during appropriate times on Saturdays as well, and nothing on Sunday. Did you have, did I miss anything?
No, I think I'm just checking through all of the notes and the comments. I know, of course, appropriate erosion control institute. All right. And I guess, and then there's the timeline.
Yep, and December 31st, 2024, which is just a hair over two and a half years.
Okay. Okay, so that's what's proposed as conditions that the board have. Any other board members have any other considerations?
I think December of 2024 is too long. I think after hearing the step the abutters are set and the information presented, I think we should be going at a shorter timetable period.
What are you suggesting, Alex?
Even if we remove six months, do it in June of 2024, I think that's a little more realistic and feasible.
I would even say the end of 2023. I think this has been going on for a long time. There's the potential that we'll have had five presidents by then. This has been going on a tremendous amount of time. I can't imagine listening to the jackhammering. I can't imagine listening to it over and over again. And I think if we allow the applicant to set the timetable, we're allowing the person who caused the problem to tell us when the problem's going to be solved. And I think our action tonight is to tell them, no, you need to complete this by then because no project should be going on for 16. And at that point, it would be, math is not my strong point, 18 years at that point, and that is too long.
I agree, Elaine.
Thank you, Alex.
Peter?
Not be opposed to setting a timeline that's a little bit shy of the December 2024 timeline. And although I agree with the comments from the other board members, the project has been going on for a long time, but it's only relatively recently that we've come across this decision that we have to make. So we have to weigh the pros and cons of the whole situation. We should give some kind of credence to the developer to get the project done. And I hate to put the developer in a position where they're almost ready to get done, but just need a little more time. So I'm a little hesitant to cut the timeline too short. I do have one other concern. I'm not sure this is the time to raise that, but why don't we play this first part out first?
Okay.
It just, so everyone knows the reason why I put out the date when I said that, of the end of 2024. It's not just that the developers said that that's the date. It's they've committed to saying, we can get it done by then. We can get everything done by then. And if we're talking about the difference between six months prior to that and that date being having a project that's incomplete and doesn't look good versus a project that's complete and done and permitted the way that it was originally intended, it makes all the sense in the world to give them the six months. And if they can't do it by then, then I'm completely fine at that point saying, too bad. But it's a balance between, we have people here who aren't developers saying, give them six months, give them a year, where we have a developer and an independent engineer saying, we can get it done in two and a half years, which is what we're talking about right now, not three years. It's two years, seven months. I agree. It's longer than I would like. I wish we could snap our fingers and say, be done in six months, but I don't think that that's the case. I think that you need to, like Peter said, you need to weigh the difference between an arbitrary date that we can set of 18 months from now or two years from now versus a concrete date that they're promising they can meet and say, okay, if you don't meet that, that's the drop dead date. I think that's the right way to handle this.
Amanda?
I wish the developer would realize that she is in over her head, and she probably should have realized that about 10 years ago or something. I think, you know, I look at things in terms of when my parents pass away. So my dad died in 2008. And so when I look at a project that's been going on for almost as long as my father's been gone, and I look at the lives of the people and how your children are growing, your parents are aging, and you're dealing with this constant construction going on, it's very unfair to you. But we're also here, we passed this project that long ago, and these people have to finish their project. And it's, I had a point. It's just unfair to put all of us, all these people, in this position so that this person can finish this totally overwhelming and gigantic project that probably shouldn't have been started, but as a board, you know, if all the boxes are checked, we have to approve the plan. So please, finish your project.
Okay.
I mean, don't get me wrong. It would be amazing if Joanne came back and said, I'll be done in 18 months or 12 months. That's the goal. Get it done as quick as you can. But I think my hope is with all of this conversation and prodding and everything else, I mean, I've spent, between going out to the site, and Mary Ellen and Mark will tell you, I've talked to them at length in the past, I've spent much more time than I care to ever spend on any project that we've ever done. But we're trying to weigh how to make it finish as quickly as possible and mitigate some of the concerns with the neighbors, and it's a delicate balance. And everyone needs to understand that. That's what our goal is, to try and mitigate those two things as best we can. And that's kind of where we're at today.
All right. So now that we've kind of talked about it.
Make a motion to.
What's the deadline date versus with all those conditions?
Yep, make a motion to amend the special permit 2609, subject to the aforementioned conditions and the expiration date, January, December 31st, 2024.
So that's the motion that's on the floor. Is there a second to that?
I did have one other concern I wanted to express. I don't know if it's too late to talk about that.
Yeah, whatever you got, Peter.
Did I hear correctly that the board is recommending transporting materials not over the Scott Road Ring Road Bridge, but directing them up Ashby West Road?
I, that's.
It's not our recommendation. It's not our recommendation. It's just to comply with current requirements of the roadways.
What you're, what, what Nick had said, Commissioner Erickson had said was not going over, not taking truck loads that are over that posted weight limit over that bridge. He suggested Ashby West, which I suppose, I, I don't know, the alternative is you go up to, what, Mayo Road, down Richardson Road?
Or you use smaller trucks or less weight?
Yeah.
That's, that's the point I was going to get at. I think it was Mr. Locken that brought up the idea of, of a Ashby West Road. If you can picture the development where it is and getting to, let's say, the Upper Common, of course, Ring Road is very direct. Ashby West Road is like driving into Vermont and then going into, into the Upper Common. It's a long way around. So I was going to recommend a better plan might be to simply use smaller trucks. And, but it's going to be more frequent trips, but use smaller trucks might be the best way around that whole scenario.
We can make that recommendation, but as, they just have to comply with the roadway requirements. It's kind of outside of our...
I mean, realistically, the goal is for them to take as few trucks as possible, period. To take off as little material as they could possibly take off and meet the grades that are shown on Jamie's plan. That's the goal. So I'd love it if no trucks came off there. But I've, in talking to, again, these applicants and other engineers, it's come, it's, I've come to a better understanding of how some sites need fill and some sites need to remove fill. And that's, you know, I, I hear you, I hear you. I, I certainly, my recommendation would be that, and I don't think any truck would ever want to go there. I mean, that's, that's the way I go, when I go out that way. It's a, it's not an easy drive. I, I know Ashby West.
So again, it's not a, it's not a recommendation to, to take any specific path. It just comply with the roadway requirements.
Understood.
I mean, I would prefer, I mean, obviously, I would prefer them not use any, you know, any side streets or rural roads like, like Ashby West, but...
Who knows? Maybe there's even truck exclusions regarding some of that area as well.
Yeah, I don't know.
So there's a motion on the floor. We're waiting for a second. There was a second. So the conditions Paul stated...
Just so everyone knows, if we don't make a decision on this tonight, what happens is they can continue forever.
Second.
I'm just, I'm just telling you, I'm just telling you what the, the alternative to my motion is, they continue forever. Or enough board members vote to change one of the portions of my motion. That's, those are the two options we have to...
So if it's not there, it could fail, and then someone else proposes something else.
Yep.
But if we don't have a date, then we don't have a date.
We have a second.
So we have a second. So I'm going to take roll call. There needs to be a minimum of five.
And this is a special permit modification, so Tracy can vote on this, right?
Yep, correct.
Because we missing, we're missing someone. Oh, we're missing Laura. Yes.
Yes. So, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say opposed. Hopefully, I'm doing this correctly. Alex?
I'm opposed.
Okay. Elin?
Opposed.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
That's five to two. Motion carries.
Who else did we miss? Who else is not here?
Just Laura.
Just Laura.
Right. So that should have been, oh, that's seven. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry. I was thinking eight. Yep, yep.
That'd be hard later in the evening.
Thank you for coming out. I mean, obviously, we, we hope it gets done as quick as possible. And I really, you know, I appreciate the comments. We are, keep, keep them up and keep taking photos and keep letting us know.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And, and to the, Jamie and Joanne, thanks for coming. Keep up with it. And Joanne, if, I'm sure you got by now, get it done as quick as humanly possible. And again, you're going to want to focus on all that drainage work because if, if we get to the point it's not done, that's got to get done right away. So, thank you, guys.
So, Paul, we got to make a couple of decisions here because we only have 25 minutes, so we're not going to be hearing all three.
Yep, yep. So Pat's going to take 30 seconds.
Okay.
Is this, hold on. Is this the self storage unit?
Wait a minute, what is it?
That's easy because we're not going to hear it, so...
When do we have to...
Welcome back.
Well, we missed you.
No, because we advertised it as portable units. So either way, you have to come back as, as permanent if you want to do it permanent.
I don't want to do permanent.
You can't do portable. Do you want me to read the zoning determination?
The one that I have that says...
The one that...
Actually, for the record, Patrick McCarty, McCarty Engineering. We're talking about Revon Place that Paul and I already started bickering about.
Thank you, Patrick.
No, I just, only because we only have 25 minutes. Let me just, I'm going to read the determination from Mark.
July 21, form of intent, you need a...
No, 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 this is yesterday.
So, this seems to be a recurring problem this evening where he, it gives the applicants a zoning determination that they then hire their engineers to do a permit application and a set of plans.
I've never seen what's on there.
And I don't know whether or not, you know, how portable was mentioned, but it has to do with the word portable, portable storage units. Because the zoning ordinance updates that occur in September put in criteria for only temporary portable storage units. And as an accessory, as an accessory use.
So I had three hours, right, to scour the whole zoning ordinance, and I couldn't find it. And Mr. O'Hara was going to email it to me, but I know he's...
I can tell you the, I can tell you right now. 181 3267 B3 prohibits the storage of goods onsite in a temporary portable storage container that is on a parcel adjacent to a residential district that would not preclude a permanently built self-storage building provided a site plan approval and special permit is issued by the planning board.
Wow.
So...
You read that way too fast.
181, oh, I'm just re, yeah, I, again, I, we're trying to get, I'm trying to get through this so we can get to other things. 181 3267 B3. It says prohibits the storage of goods onsite in a temporary portable storage container that is on a parcel adjacent to a residential district.
Okay.
That's what it says.
Which it is.
So if you want to do permanent, we can talk about that, but let's talk about it next month when we advertise that.
Sure. Let's do a continuance then, so we're not going to, because we're not going to solve this, this evening.
No, we could, we could say that it's open and continue it.
Yeah, let's keep it...
Is there a building? Does your focus says, I'm working on building?
They have to be permanent, apparently. I...
I can weld them all together.
Yeah, they have to be attached to the, they have to be attached to the ground to make them permanent. That's what our, that's what permanent means.
Which we can do. So...
Let's just say the other aspect is that it's, it's an accessory use. It's not a primary use, is portable storage containers.
And I will say, this site has issues to begin with, as...
Yeah, we'll just say it's not without...
It's not, it's by far not a slim dunk. So we could talk about that another time, too.
We can. And I, I appreciate that position. I would respectfully request a continuance so that if we do successfully discuss this with the commissioner, we can come back and not start the process over. I think waiting three hours this evening is certainly enough justification to grant us an extension to next month and not just say you're done.
And I certainly apologize. No, 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 I was, I'm certainly fine with that. And I, and I definitely apologize that you had to wait this long because I thought you saw this.
Nope.
So, I'm going to have, because I...
I would have ate dinner if I saw it.
I don't have your email here. I'm going to have Mike forward it to you so that you could see what we, what Commissioner Barbero wrote. We just got it. So, it's not like we, I would have sent it to you had I seen it earlier. I probably would have, but I didn't, I didn't know. So...
Understood. Okay.
All right. Make a motion to continue to next month.
Second.
Motion's made with a second to continue. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Sorry. Uh, Pat, you're not doing AL Prime?
What's that?
You're not doing AL Prime? I thought I saw your name on that. No?
No, I, I did like seven stations for them, but not this one.
That's why, that's why I asked that, because I thought I saw your name on it, anyway. All right, thanks.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry. Can I waste another minute of those time?
You can waste as much time, Bill, as you want.
So we do have another site plan review in front. This is site plan review for AL Prime. Demolish existing building and construct new 1,930 square foot convenience store with gas pumps at 237 Lunenburg Street.
Pull this up. I'll put you up on the screen here so we can see if I can find it.
I, I also brought my presentation on boards, old school.
Oh, perfect. I don't think we have an easel, though.
I brought an easel also. Also, I have it on a thumb drive where you can just go to a PDF and put it right up.
I, I have, I have this one because, unless you changed it from your submittal, I have the whole submittal.
This has an aerial photo and a color version that that might not have.
Okay, I'll take it. You could, you could tell me what you want up and I'll put it up.
We have a bow.
As you go on it, just, it's in order.
Okay. So we're looking at condensed version.
I will try to be condensed.
All right.
For the record, my name is Anthony Guba. I'm a registered PE in the state of Massachusetts. I'm employed by AL Prime, and I'm the civil engineer for this project. Basically, it's located at 237 Lunenburg. It's an AL Prime gas station now. There's a small store. It's in terrible shape, really needs an upgrade. And we've been looking to do this for a while. We were planning on doing this a year ago or more, but because of COVID and supply chain issues, we were given nine-month lead times for things like the underground tanks, so it got delayed. We didn't realize we needed to come before you. We submitted the form of intent, and we had already submitted the building permit application. So we're looking to start this year. We expect the project would take no longer than six months complete in the same calendar year. Basically, that's the existing conditions plan.
You tell me what you want up and I can...
Yeah, so you can see what's there if you go to the next shot. Just go down the page. This is what we're proposing to do. So, the blue areas, one is a, a new store building that would be in the back of the property. The store building that's there would be taken away. The blue area in the front is the new canopy, which we push the islands back because right now, if you look, take a look at it, that front island is almost on the sidewalk. So we push the islands back so that the, there's a full lane that stays on the property. And then there's plenty of room between the islands and the building for a tractor-trailer that's making fuel deliveries to be able to come through the site counterclockwise, come in off Garland, through that driveway, go around the, the backside of the canopy, make a delivery and pull out without having to back in or back out, which is what trucks have to do now. So it would be a lot safer for them to be able to circulate through the, through the property. There's no wetlands, there's no resource areas, there's no large caliper trees. We're not going to be doing any cut and fill. The new tanks are going to go in basically the same spot that the existing tanks are in, so we're not expecting to do any major excavation. The soil here is soft. There won't be any blasting or any kind of hammering or anything like that. The site's municipal water and sewer. We're not proposing to change any of the driveways. They would stay just as they are now. The plans that you have there show you the truck turning radius. It includes an erosion control plan. It includes a floor plan for the building, which is a basic C-store. Like, we can go through this here, but if, unless you want to do that, I'm just trying to speed it right along. It's a basic, it's just a simple thing. Everything will be ADA compliant, and we're not requesting any waivers, no exemptions or any other relief. We think the main purpose here is to improve an aging facility. We have some serious competition across the street in Patriot Fuel and some other stations up the street. We've tried to invest into the neighborhood. We, we redid the bulk plant that's across Garland Street. A few years, about six years ago, we, we completely raised that and improved that situation. One of our tenants was recently before you to, to install the new cannabis facility and hopefully improve that plaza a little bit. And so now we're looking at doing this, which I, I think would improve the aesthetics, improve the safety, improve the circulation. We're not adding any dispensers and we're not really making the store any bigger, but it should be a lot better than it is now.
Do you have any building elevations?
Uh, yes. So if you keep going through, I think it's the next one or the one after.
Very good.
Okay.
Very straightforward building. We have, we have several of these. I don't know if you've seen a new one we built in Drakehead about two years ago. Looks almost exactly like this. We have one in Woburn, right off of 93. We have one in Lynn. We have, we have probably six or eight of these now.
Okay. Paul, could you go back to the site plan? I got some questions regarding the parking. I also want to know about the, what the existing driveway length is. I know you mentioned no waivers, but you're reconstructing the site pretty much, so you try to meet the code as best you can.
Okay.
So, but...
One of the reasons that we're not wanting to touch the driveway on Lunenburg Street is it's state-controlled. So, the driveway's existing under a DOT permit, and we're just trying not to touch that.
Well, we got to, I do have a concern regarding the parking, present parking layout because it's either right exact or extends a little bit over the entranceway. So that parking doesn't seem to be as protected from cars entering and exiting. It's like right, it's just very in the aisle.
I agree that it's not as, it's not as far away as we'd like it to be. However, it's, it's exactly the same way it, it presently exists and it works.
And I'm saying that you're reconstructing the site, do better. Not as it presently exists. Otherwise, you'd be doing on the same footprint.
Well, yeah, by, by, the, the big thing that we're doing is just moving the building to be able to open up the, the circulation and push the fuel islands back. But the parking, the tanks, basically all in the same spot. Under zoning, we're required to have so many parking spots. I'm not sure where, there's no, it's only a quarter acre lot, so it's not like there's room to push them anywhere else.
Again, what is the actual driveway width size? Because it may be narrowed down like a couple of feet.
You just tighten the curb cut without, it's the state.
And I don't think, you're not doing the work in the road, so it's, it is about with deep with the sidewalk. So, you're not, you're not altering Lunenburg Street.
I mean, my, my, one of my suggestions, being out there in the site, and one of the problems is, I would at least recommend, and I don't know if this is going to require your coordination with DOT as well, is resetting all those granite curbs because a lot of them are sunken.
I think as long as, if we're just fixing up what's there, that won't be a problem. And I think we can probably get through DOT. What happens with DOT at this point, and I've just run into this project, this problem with another project in Salem, Mass. The MEPA process recently enacted EJ, environmental justice population, additional restrictions. And a project that would normally not require a full environmental impact report is now required to do it if it's within one mile and three mile, two different setbacks, for, based on vehicle trips. We have a gas station pretty similar to this, and that alone added $150,000 in environmental studies that probably won't do anybody any good. Because we have to study for greenhouse gas and climate change and all these other impacts that it's just a gas station. It's not like it's an industrial plant. So if we have to do that, if we, if it gets pushed to the point that we have to go to DOT and DOT says we have to go to MEPA, and it adds that to the project, we won't do the, we'll just leave it the way it is.
Is there, is there an alternative? Because, because I understand what Paul is saying. The problem, too, is you're directing traffic predominantly off of Lunenburg Street that way, where you're going to have cars backing into lanes of travel. So i, if they overlap lanes, the lane of travel, which it kind of does, is there any, is there any alternative location on site that you can put the parking spaces? You can't move the building around or...
No, because if you, if you take a look at it, we, I've tried going through this site and trying to put parking in front of the building. Our preference would be to have the parking face the building in front of the building. Tried moving the building over to the, to the east side. Tried moving the building to the other side. It, it really is such a tight and odd-shaped lot that this is, we're kind of stuck.
Just so you folks know, scaling off of the graphic scale, it's about 55 feet wide.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
If you go to the swept path, which is maybe another three or four sheets in, it was included in the sheet.
Okay.
Part of the reason for the driveway whip is for the tractor-trailer turn radius going in and out of the property. So if you just keep going down, it'll, it'll come...
The other part was that Garland Street also was completely open, and we'd like to see some of that actually closed up a bit because it's just completely open, particularly maybe at least even by the building.
Well, we could probably add some curbing way back in, but if you can zoom in and take a look at any one of those, you can see what happens with, with the tractor-trailer in the swing.
I just have too much stuff on my screen. I can't, I can't see all the buttons. You guys only see one thing, but I have about 40 windows open.
Yeah, but I don't, I still don't think the tractor-trailer needs a 50-foot opening to exit the property.
Well, you can see where right now, yeah. So we can bring, we can probably bring the curbing... the curbing north. So if you're looking at it, it would be down on the Garland Street, maybe from where it is now on the D, put, push it down to where the S is so that we, we tighten it up to the track, trail on that side and then bring the curbing up Garland Street to where it would intersect with the sweat path there. And we can probably even violate that sweat path a little bit. The truck can run it over without much of an issue.
The one thing I would like to see, like I said, on the front edge is two things, raising and setting the granite, but also continuing the brand-new sidewalk that OMG just did further down or they're going to do. I don't know if they've done it yet. I don't even-
It's done, yeah.
Done. And your other butter to the left, meaning you'll be the only one without a sidewalk. So if you can, if you can continue that sidewalk down, I think that that might, I, I'm willing to, I'm willing to overlook the change, the, the, the parking potential issue on that left-hand side if we can beautify that neighborhood a little bit better by, by doing that, especially given how many people walk that way.
Sure. Is there a spec that, that you want me to match? I'm not sure where-
Granite curb, well, granite curbing's already there, so just concrete, concrete-
We can certainly put in a concrete sidewalk there and distinguish it at least visually from the asphalt.
The pavement.
Yeah, sure. No, no problem at all. Were you talking about raising the granite curbing or you-
Well, just to, just to the appropriate height because a lot of it's sunken down into the ground, so whatever you, whatever it would normally get raised to.
We can fix it, yeah.
Yeah, right, right, right.
But, and again, I, I really want to see at least a few extra feet closed up for that parking that's there so that it's protected from the entranceway.
Can you, can you tuck it in another foot or two towards Walgreens or are you already around that boundary?
Well, you need, you need three feet setback, but we also, and also-
Oh, it's way more than three feet. That proposal's way more than three feet.
Oh, no, no, the property line is-
Oh, is the, is the squared line? I thought it was the rounded line, okay.
Right, that, that curve, that's actually the, the pavement edge on Walgreens property.
So you're, you're at the three foot then for that?
Yes.
And, and how many spaces are required? Are these, is this the minimum required or is this?
Uh, yeah, well, that, that-
How many employees, I guess?
Is on our C1 and I have that spelled out.
I can pull it up too if you need me to.
How many employee parking spaces do you think they need? Two? One?
Uh, right now, we're just showing, I think, two. One of the ones out front and one in front of the dumpster area, yeah.
There's a parking spot there? I don't see that delineated.
Uh, that's what that, yeah, that's what that line is there, yeah.
What line?
The line that's coming out from the center of the-
Right here?
Yeah.
Oh, well, that-
So that's a parking spot on the right side of that line.
Oh.
Which is fine if it's employees, that's fine. What's the worst that can happen? Players moves, the dumpster gets emptied, who cares? What I would, the reason why I ask that is, it would be, I know you need, I'm, I know you need the striping to the right of the handicap space. If you didn't need the spaces, I'd be a little bit more okay with it if we could just get rid of that bottom one so you don't have of the, the fifth car down there backing right in as someone's coming in. At least if you start, you know, 10 feet further north of that, nine feet, which is the width of the space, at least you'll, you'll have a little bit more area to see, you know, a car is backing up as you're turning in. Meaning the car can get off of Lunenburg Street if they're turning in while a car is backing up versus that first space, which is somewhat problematic.
My calculation for this site was that we were required to have four spaces. We have seven on site now, we reduced it to five.
I mean, is it, is it problematic to get rid of that space closest to Lunenburg Street?
We can do that.
I mean, because I think if you do that, if you make that, you know, you can maybe bump out your landscaping, just make it a triangular area or something.
Okay.
That way, there's a little bit more room for a car to pass through traffic on Lunenburg Street in case someone's backing up while they're doing it.
We can do that. We can get rid of that spot and then-
Add landscaping.
Maybe put a, a five-foot-wide landscape between the property line to where the, where the spot begins.
That would, that would look nice.
Okay.
I could agree with that.
I mean, we, we normally don't need what is required under the zoning for parking because almost everybody parks at the pump.
Yep. Especially a site this small, yeah.
Yeah, it's a very small site.
Did you, do you have, and I, I didn't even, I'm sure it's here somewhere because you have so much fencing detail for your-
No, actually, I went looking for that when you, and mentioned on someone else's application earlier that you don't like chain link, which is our standard screening with the black vinyl insert for our trash enclosure, but if you want something else, we can-
Yeah, so, so especially there, it's a very high visible location on both the Garland Street side and the Lunenburg Street side.
Probably on the Garland Street side, you won't see that end because there's a pretty serious vegetation and the, the butter in the back has, if you go back to the existing plan-
They have drive-through under things.
Well, and they have some kind of a shed or something there and it blocks that, that whole side.
I, I would say, I would say, so generally speaking, you know, some sort of decorative fencing usually, so wood doesn't usually weather well. I'm aware of the potential issues with vinyl, but it tends to do fairly well as long as they keep it up well, so that would be the preference.
Okay.
At least the front portion.
Right.
Whatever's facing the public.
Whether that be sliding or swinging or whatever you want to do.
The majority of the building's split-faced block. Would you have a problem if we built the enclosure out of split-faced block also?
No.
And then use, say, vinyl for the doors or something?
No, that'd be great. That would look fantastic if you want to do that.
Yeah, well, I'll see. But that's probably the way we'll go because I agree, the reason we go with the chain link because it, it holds up so much better. The vinyl looks better, but it, not after two or three years.
You gotta, you gotta keep up with it. I know, we, we, we do that pretty much for every property now and it usually takes, you know, four or five years then, there's usually a, you know, some sort of patching, repairing, replacing slats because they all cut, they pop out, so.
Okay.
And then what are you doing, anything towards the back, towards the butter? Like for the building side, is there a fence or?
Right now, the, right now, there's nothing there. The building itself, behind it, we hadn't proposed anything, but in the gap between the building and Garland, we had proposed to put screening in because that's, we felt that's probably where there would be any like headlight glare or anything like that.
Okay.
But, I mean, if you want us to continue it, our, our site plan, I think, does show the landscaping on it. And, but basically, it's just in that area between the building.
I think, I think the butter does have a fence that goes, I probably-
There is a fence, there's a chain link fence, there's like a four-foot-tall chain link fence that runs the full length of that property line.
Okay.
Did you say clear vegetation? I'm sorry, I was writing a bunch of stuff and you were looking at me. Was I supposed to write something now? Did you say clear vegetation?
No.
Okay. Well, that was the only other thing I was gonna say is if there is any onsite vegetation like you, I think that area to the right of that dumpster is not your property though, correct?
I actually, on that same thumb drive, if you look down further, there's a, two photo files of the rear property line and that might show you.
All right, let me change screens here.
One's labeled rear property line from the east and the other one's from the west.
Yep. I gotta figure out how to easily, easily change screens.
Okay, so this is, this is on the back of our property, which is basically where the store is gonna, the backside of the store looking out towards Garland. That's the shed that I was mentioning that basically blocks sight of the, the property from Garland Street. That's not our shed. And there's some pretty serious vegetation and a big tree, but that's also not on our property, so that's not going to change. That building will go away and right here where the, where this dumpster is, this would all go away and the building would be here. So, we didn't show any landscaping there because it would just be the back of the building. So there's not like any traffic or anything like that, that that screening would be blocking, would just be blocking the back of the building. We can put it there if you'd like, but we didn't see that, it wasn't necessary. Plus, it gets pretty tight, the building-
I switched, I switched the photo while you were-
This is looking the other direction, so you can see that same dumpster and you can see the Walgreens in the background. The building will be pretty tight. I think in that corner, it's only three or four feet between the building and the property line.
It, it, do you know whose fence that is? Is it yours or is it theirs?
I believe it's the neighbors, but I'll be honest with you, I'm not 100% sure and it's not necessarily on the property line. It, it includes-
Well, and I only ask because it'd be nice if, if, if you could, if you could turn their vinyl fence at Walgreens to your building, just to kind of block that, that corner off.
I think that that's actually a wood fence, but-
No, it's vinyl.
I'm pretty sure it's vinyl because we just approved that one not long ago. I would be very surprised if it were wood. Hard, yeah, hard to tell from, from this, but.
You mean that, sorry, that vinyl fence?
Yeah.
That's Walgreens?
Yeah, no, he, he said he thinks it's wood. I said I'd be surprised if it was wood.
Oh, it's vinyl, I remember what they asked.
Okay, we, yeah, we could extend that, you wanted to-
I mean, even if you just tie it to the end of your building, because your building's going to be setback there anyway.
The vinyl.
See, now our property's really weird. We can do that. That fence, the way they've run that fence to the, to the Walgreens fence, our property actually runs back along that fence, if you, if you look at the exist, or our site plan, our, it's really weird the way-
You said the fence is not along the property line.
Yeah. That, the, the chain link fence actually cuts off a, a portion of our property.
I'm going back to the site plan, hold on, I gotta get to, which one do you want? What page do you want?
Um, any one of them, that, that one's good. But you can see-
Yeah, you, whoops, sorry, I just pressed the wrong button.
No, that works.
Oh, okay.
Wait, let me, let me-
Hold on, let me get back there. Okay. I was trying to, I was trying to zoom in, there we go.
But, yeah, so this is kind of the, we were looking at that last photo from the bottom here.
Right.
And the, the Walgreens fence comes down someplace towards the back of the building and we can return it. I don't, do you want to keep going or just add it at the building?
No, 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 I think if you just return it to your building and that way you, you just kind of create some continuity there with-
And no alleyway for people to walk to it.
We can possibly do that, but I, I think I gotta work something out with the neighbor about adverse possession over that, that little piece of property there. Maybe do a swap with them to straighten out a liners, I don't know.
Are you talking about this little corner back here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if you, again, if you can't do it, it's not, it's not a make or break thing, it's just, it might tie everything together.
We can't, we can't really use that anyway, so I mean-
That's why I'm saying, and you know, and it'll prevent, not that anyone would go back there, but it would prevent any, you know, it would block off the sites.
Yes.
So.
Yeah, we can do that.
If, if, if it's feasible, look into it. I, I think that that would be nice.
Does any board member have any other thoughts regarding the site?
No, I got nothing.
Pretty happy, happy with it?
I'm good with it.
Okay. Alex?
Um.
So we're talking about, you said it's about six months to complete, reset the granite curbs, remove one of the parking spaces and add landscaping. What's the one that's towards Lunenburg Street? Landscaping bed.
Yep.
We're also going to add the sidewalk on Garland.
No, the sidewalk is Lunenburg Street.
Oh, the, and Garland, was it continue, you said continue it?
Continue it along Lunenburg Street. So the one OMG just did along the front of their property and now continue down because there's, there's, there's concrete sidewalks in front of Walgreens, which I'm pretty sure we had them do when they did that site. If not, if not Mastod did it, I don't know.
They did.
Yeah, Walgreens did, yeah.
And we're, we're bringing the curb back around onto Garland. We can continue the sidewalk up to where that return on the, on the driveway is also in that direction.
That'd be great.
But to be honest, once you get across our driveway, the neighbor's property is, I don't know that there's any room between what they're, they have a fence that comes down in there also. I don't think there's any room between that fence and-
You don't have to, the sidewalk doesn't have to go up, go further up, go.
So the sidewalk's gotta be ended right there.
Yeah, just terminated on the rounding and-
And just, yeah, make sure, I guess, in whatever meets ADA compliance for a corner. Like if, whatever meets ADA compliance for the corner-
Okay.
Would be an improvement.
I'm not sure, there may be something there already. There may be a depressed curb ramp with a, with a tactile thing, I don't know, but, but we'll make it work right.
Okay.
And then the fencing of the dumpster. All right. This is a public hearing, so are there any, is there anybody in the audience, either here or at home?
No. Good.
Okay.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion's made with a second to close the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, deliberation.
Make a motion to approve the site plan for AL Prime, subject to the following conditions, to, along Lunenburg, along Lunenburg Street to reset the granite and create a new concrete sidewalk with granite curbing, remove the parking space closest to Lunenburg Street and make it a landscaped area. If there's any onsite vegetation that, that's overgrown, just to maintain and clear vegetation and maintain your landscaping. If it's feasible, connect the Walgreens vinyl fence to the, to the corner of the building or to the corner of the property or I'll leave, leave it up to you to decide how to do that. And if it's not feasible, that's fine too. And then just to provide a plan showing the revised comments, the parking space, the landscaping, the sidewalk, the granite curbing, and whatever you decide on the dumpster. I'll say split-faced block dumpster and vinyl enclosure, something like that, and you can kind of finalize that and figure it out. And I would just recommend just running it by the board or at least, you know, if you don't want to put it on the plan, just run it by us once you decide what you want to do.
No, I'll, I'll amend the site details.
That'd be great. Yep. The more you can put on there, the better, that's, because that's our controlling document.
One, one comment I would like to make, because you, the way you worded it, it was to get rid of that one parking space and make it all landscape, but I think we were looking at making the landscape maybe five feet in from the-
It doesn't have to be all landscape.
If I can, and you already took it off, but the, the parking spaces were crammed up against the building so that that last handicap spot, I had to actually-
Yeah, move them down a little bit.
Yeah, so I wanted to move it down a little, if I get rid of the spot.
Just, just as long as you keep a decent enough buffer, like I said, where you can get a whole car in-
Away from the road.
Onto the, onto the sites or, or onto that, off Lunenburg Street in case someone's backing out, that was the whole point.
From the gutter line to that first spot, we'll try to keep it somewhere between 18 feet.
I would say, I would say that would be good.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with that, but you're, just, you revised the plan and, you know, this is going to be subject to the revised supplemental plan, so, yeah.
Right.
And, and, and that was the last thing, just revising the, revising the plan and verifying.
Not for long, but do you, do you see Nick still?
No, he's not on it. Uh, hold on.
Because I talked to him briefly today, I think he had one suggestion since that in section floods still.
Nick, I'm asleep, I didn't see you on there, I'm sorry. Are you still around?
Yep, I am, no worries. Excuse me. One of the, the suggestions I had to Mike was that the, the drain line on Lunenburg Street is undersized, so the road and the adjacent roadways, or parking lots rather, to the roadway flood during like really large, really intense rainstorms. So my suggestion was to have the applicant put the catch basin silt sacks, kind of a little bit above and beyond their, their construction area, so in the actual roadway itself and one or two catch basins up the road and one or two catch basins down the road.
We, we can certainly do it, I think there is a detail on the sheet for the silt sack, and we can just go ahead and add that.
Actually, in front of the gas station across the street too, would make sense, cause there's a couple of gas-
There's no crown in the road?
Is it across the street, Nick, too, or what?
There, there is a crown in the road, but the, the drain line itself is severely undersized, so it does flood during really large stormer events, so we'd ask for across the road too.
Okay.
Can you do that?
Sure, well, um, I'll contact you and you can tell me exactly which catch basins you want done and we'll do them all.
Thanks, Nick.
Sure, that would, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So there's a motion?
Sorry, I think I just muted, I'm sorry, I just muted.
Motion to approve-
Peak cap, cause I-
These conditions also with the DPW condition about the drainage.
That, I, yeah, I hit the ass down, me, Peter, just so you know, I muted you by mistake, so you probably have to unmute when you're ready to speak.
All set.
Okay, so again, motion on the floor with conditions.
And then-
Is there a second?
You said I would just add whatever, Nick, and they just described.
Yes, we will add that as a condition.
Good.
I'll second that.
And there's a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Sometimes, rarely it benefits you to be at the end of a meeting, so, you're up.
You're at the end.
Yeah, you're at the very end.
So we are past our ten o'clock curfew piece.
I will, I will say, I will say one thing, um, so, so-
Self-imposed, so it's-
So Bill, so, oh, here you go. So, so Bill and I had talked about this, and, and I think we talked to the applicant as well too, that the understanding is, it's a general overview.
Well, wait, am I opening the hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, so I wanted to, wait, wait, let me just state-
Laura, I have to recuse.
Have a safe drive.
Laura has to recuse, but I wanna state for the public, for the, this is a site plan review for Fitchburg Land Property Owner LLC, construction of three thousand six hundred, well, three, three, yeah, three six six, comma, nine one two, square feet of industrial warehouse and distribution center at Zero Crawford Street. So over three hundred and fifty thousand square foot industrial building.
Yeah, I got it, Bill, I'll pull it up. Is there a particular place you want me to start? Hold on, that's the wrong one.
Beginning.
Okay.
Laura, good night.
Bye, Laura.
Are you leaving?
Reuse herself.
Okay.
All right, hold on, I'm just, I just gotta find, I have about a million emails here, I just need to find it. Here we go. Wrong ones. All right. Uh, that's just the locusts. All right, so I have site plan approval narrative, site plan, so you just want the site plan, GFI Crawford Road four six point two.
It should be, it should be a rendering one that-
All right, hold on, I'll put this up and then you tell me if this is the right one.
That's, that's fine for now. I mean, it's ten, it's ten o'clock.
I shoot for fine at this point, so go ahead.
We understand this is gonna be an overview.
Right.
No decision is expected this evening, there's a lot more work to be done.
Madam Chair, thank you so much, and to the board for having us this evening, my name is Haley Palazola, I'm joined by my colleague Jaclyn Bart. We are the applicant, Fitchburg Land Property Owner, um, an affiliate of GFI Partners, local real estate developer, um, owning numerous properties in the city of Fitchburg already. Um, we're here tonight to talk about the approximate forty acre site located in both the city of Fitchburg and about twenty acres in the town of Lunenburg. The site is known as map one forty-three parcel number one, or commonly referred to as Zero Airport Road and Zero Crawford Street. As we meant, um, Madam Chair mentioned, we are proposing a three hundred and sixty-six thousand square foot warehouse, um, with approximately three hundred and sixty-seven parking spaces, sixty-one loading docks, and forty-three trailer spaces, could be forty-eight. I'll have to ask Chris and Bill about that.
That's a great ballpark.
Um, as, as you guys just, um, already discussed, um, tonight is really just an introduction to the project, we are well underway with conversations with the, um, city departments on a couple of open issues, and we have a full traffic study forthcoming to tonight's, um, application. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Bill Hannigan, I'm sorry, Bill, I didn't introduce you, Bill Hannigan, Hannigan Engineering, and Chris Anderson of Hannigan Engineering, our civil engineers.
We know Bill.
Yeah. So, for the record, Bill Hannigan with Hannigan Engineering, uh, Mike, did you have the rendered versions?
Uh, hold on one second, it's a-
They're not, they might be in a different file.
Uh, I, I have a whole, I mean, was it in the Dropbox? Cause I have all the Dropbox stuff, so.
It might have been separate because we just got it. Well, we got it, um, prior to last week's.
All right, yeah, these ones?
No, they're, they're, um-
End of rings, yeah, but this was-
Remember the colored site plans that we looked at?
No, I don't have those.
I have them on here.
Uh, yeah, you can hand it to me, I'll, I'll put on-
Quick.
Hey, I will put on whatever you guys want me to put on. Thank you, we're just getting used to this. Okay. Got it. All right. Bear with me for one second. Fitchburg Planning Board, uh, render, okay.
So it's essentially the, uh, the locus sheet they had up, but it's got, got some color to it, and then we can jump through the three main site plans, kinda bring it through the project. But the, there we go. So, um, towards the bottom of the page, you can just pan up a little bit, yeah. Um, there, the, the two main entrances that are on the project are, uh, on the west side, I guess that's the south side, cause it's rotated. But the, uh, the, the westerly entrance is, is for, is anticipated for being, uh, employee, um, driven, so the employees would come in that area there. They would then access the parking around the building. The truck traffic is essentially gonna end up going in from the, um, the easterly entrance, which is in that area there, which is near the Tango Construction Site, um, that we did some work on with, um, with, uh, them and, and in the town of Lunenburg for some of the encroachments they had done onto the FRA project, uh, in the past. So this now is the, the remaining portion of the FRA project, of the FRA land. Um, the loading docks are on the north side of the building, um, the employee parking is, is looped around the building. Um, there's, we're trying to prevent, uh, interaction between the truck traffic and the, uh, uh, employee traffic. Um, there are a couple of spots where there could be, um, conflicts, but those are limited. Essentially, what we're trying to do is have the trucks come in from the east entrance, um, draft themselves up towards the, the, the door side of the building where the loading docks are. And basically, they would be backing in, storing vehicles, storing the trails on, on the, on the east side, backing into the dock on the, on the west side of the, of that parking lot area, east side of the building. And then what they would do is they would turn and head south, back out the same entrance that they came through. We do have, at the top of the page, please, um, we do have a connection there for emergency purposes, so that if, if there was a blockage in the traffic to the south, that vehicles could go around counterclockwise, um, to the north and then the west of the building, and tra-, and traverse back over to, um, the exit, uh, to the south as well. Um, that would be for emergency purposes only. The, the overall site is, is gonna be serviced with, uh, municipal water and sewer. Um, the sewer connection is at the, at or near the, um, syphon that goes underneath the Nashville River. We're gonna probably go a little bit north of that, um, to try to get into the, um, not try directly into the syphon, but to tie into a manhole, uh, to the north of that, there is an existing city easement that we'd be utilizing for that. The water system would be basically a system that comes off of, um, Airport Road and loops around the building, providing fire protection to the various points that would be required in the building, uh, depending upon where the fire service is and where the domestic service is. What we typically try to do is loop around the building and have, um, the, the fire and, and, uh, domestic line come early in the, in the connection, versus being at the very end of the, the loop to make sure that the water stays clean and that there's more water being utilized along the way. So that's, that's typically how it's done, those details are forthcoming, depending upon how the building configuration works out inside. In general, uh, the drainage is, is, uh, it's shed away from the building. Parking areas and, and loading areas have various locations of catch basins, they're not on this, on this version here, but they are on the main site plan, uh, and utility plan. Some underground storage areas, which we've done soil testing for, and the good news is that, once you get through a lot of the film material on the site, there's a lot of good gravel beneath it. Um, so we do incorporate quite a bit of infiltration on the east side of the building, and on the west side of the building, we, we have detention with infiltration, um, for-
All of it, is it all?
It's all infiltration on the west side as well. So all in all, the, the project layout, um, utility configurations, et cetera, all, um, are managed on site. Uh, we don't have any off-site improvements that we're making relative to, to utilities and/or drainage. Um, there, there are, uh, some studies being done right now, as Haley mentioned, relative to traffic. Uh, once those come back, we'll, we'll take a look at the, uh, the traffic layout to make sure that what we have, um, on the plan is functional. Um, and I think that with that, we could, uh, probably move to the next meeting, and hopefully we'll have that information between now and then. There's a long way to go, it's a, it's a big project, uh, we have some communications that we've already had with the various departments, uh, on the project, so we're gonna continue that effort and, um, hopefully be able to iron out the, the items that have been raised thus far. And as new ones come up, we'll address them and come back to the board next week, next month for, um, hopefully, uh, anticipated, nice quick approval, like you did with the gas station right before us.
So you wanna be here-
We'd like to be at the beginning of the meeting though, if we could.
Fifty P M.
With the traffic study, when are you anticipating it to be ready?
Um, I was hoping actually for this meeting that it would be done, so I expect it in probably another week or so, but, um, we'll probably do some additional, um, sensitivity analysis as, um, the site next door that we discussed, so I expect to have, um-
This, to touch on that, this, and we've talked about this, that there's, there's the, uh, the, the property to the, to the west, uh, northwest, uh, the Amazon site, there's a, some conditions in that that are required relative to review of that project and, um, the, the traffic mitigation, um, uh, program for that, for that project. Part of that was to look at, if it was available, a potential, um, access route to the southeast, which ends up being through this property. Now, as everyone knows, there's a piece of land in between that we don't control, that has a landfill on it, so there are some other obstacles on that, we are evaluating those obstacles. Uh, but for the purpose of the traffic study for this project, what I think makes sense is that we keep this project separate from that project, for now. The, the traffic study, I think, I think we have the initial traffic study, we'll be ready for the end of the week, right?
Correct, yep.
So what we'd like to do is to have that traffic study and, and authorized, um, you know, with Mike's work, um, to get that review started through your peer engineer.
So that's where I was going with that, I wasn't even, I wasn't even getting on the Amazon thing yet. What I, what I wanted, what I wanted to get at was just, because obviously we're talking about a relatively large scale building-
Yep.
Just to have Ty and Bond or whomever look over the traffic study.
Right.
And the sooner you get it to them, the sooner we get answers, so it won't hold us up too many meetings, hopefully.
Right.
Because I know, even if you get it tomorrow, who knows if they get, if it's all gonna be done by our next meeting, and if it's not, we, we can meet again, but we, we need those answers.
We need adequate time to review it, and also the departments to review those comments as well, so they can get some good feedback. I guess that there's maybe another request is also get a review of this, since it's such a large project of the stormwater plan.
For peer review?
For peer review.
Who would you, would Ty and Bond would also do that?
I don't know, Mike?
Could be one of the on-call, it'd be Ty and Bond, Weston and Sampson. Now, we'll get, we'll make a call tomorrow and send, um, send the materials that they already have, so at least they can give a, a ballpark estimate for the review of the stormwater.
Right.
And then when we get the traffic impact study, the same thing. We'll get a, a price quote, an estimate, you know, ask you for a check, we'll set up a fifty-three G account. Separate just for that pro, this project.
And I'll mention to, when you're looking, evaluating the parking, like, I did see the, the summary difference, of course, between the two community, three hundred and sixty-something cars versus the one oh eight, but what, and I know you don't have a tenant, um, prospective tenant at this, but if, we always like parking, it's a lot of impervious area, and depending, I guess, depending on what type of tenant or tenant you get, may, should there be more of a, uh, potential for any reserved parking area versus just building it all out? So at least, at least identify something like that.
Yeah, I think, and I'll yield to Chris on this, but I think that that's gonna play into the drainage system and being able to, cause, um, it, it, you know, if you have, if you have catch basins around the entire site, you really can't build something. You might be able to, actually, what you might be able to do is just build the driveway for it and not build the spaces themselves, that'd be one way of doing it. But I think we need the loop road, um, to have it function and to be able to have a potential of tenant on the, on the south and on the north, as, you know, plan north and plan south here, and plan west, you know, it might be that we, we can, we can-
Well, wasn't there a parking lot to the south, like, for the south?
Oh, that's actually-
Oh, yeah, there's the tractor trailer.
That's trailer storage.
Oh, okay. I thought it was always, I thought it was to the-
Those are tractor trailer parks.
I thought it was to the east.
Yeah, all of those, um-
There's more tractor, okay.
All of these types of facilities need additional storage space for empty trailers, um, not that empty trailers make money, uh, but they have to have the availability to, um, to, to set those trailers up so that they can do distribute, distribution that way. So all of the sites that we're working on have, you know, it's probably about a two or three to one relative, uh, to the number of docks you have, um, to the number of trailer storage areas you have.
I don't wanna, I, I don't wanna speak for you guys, but I did find a couple things interesting that you told us the other day, first, the board members that didn't hear this yet, Paula just mentioned it, but you don't have a tenant yet, you're building, and, but you're, according to Steve, it was, right?
Yep.
Hundred percent confident they're gonna have one, building a building this big after it's built or while it's being built, which I think is amazing.
One or two.
And, and that's exactly the scenario with all the ones that we're, that they're, they're working on and that we're working on as well, they're all built as speculative buildings, and it's, it's, you can't, you can't build them fast enough.
Yeah, and the other thing was, we talked about, because I mentioned it earlier tonight, about trucking on and off-site, you mentioned, Bill, that the site is, or, Chris, I think, when we were at the meeting on Tuesday, Thursday, that it's mostly balanced about seven thousand cubic yard, cubic yards of soil being taken off there, something to that effect?
That's a dangerous number to work with, because of the fact, and, and, okay, you can do it, Chris. Because of the fact of what's out there.
Yep.
Okay, so this is a LiDAR topo, okay, it's, it's, it's ninety percent done with LiDAR, it's very accurate, but the problem with it is, in some of these areas where there's stuff that's overgrown and it's all logs, okay, that comes into play with your cut fill, okay? The other part of it is that there's areas out there that are, um, are not, um, need to be basically dug up, processed, separated, and then reused. So there's gonna be a, um, that seven thousand is a, is a, is a, is a net number. So there's gonna be material brought onto the site, for example, um, you know, uh, gravel bedding, stone, uh, concrete, pavement, those other materials are, are in that net number. So there's gonna be, there's gonna be trips to the site for that, there's also gonna be, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that the majority of the material that we're seeing on the site is, is gonna stay, um, and we're gonna end up with, uh, remnant material being removed from the site. The, the, the wood, and you've been down there, the wood and the stumps and the trees are not even logs, they're trees that are just piled up everywhere. I'm not sure whether those are even, whether you could even chip those anymore if they're, if they're, if they're wet or rotted.
So I know-
So, there's other materials that are gonna be coming out, okay?
Sure.
So I, I think what we're gonna end up doing is trying to do an evaluation and breaking down the surface, the final surface of the, the top fifteen inches, if you will, of the site that's not, that's gonna be brought in, okay? And then kinda read, readjust that, that, uh, cut number or, or removal number-
Yep.
To incorporate some sort of a, hey, the, the, one foot, one foot down over the entire disturbed area is gonna also be-
For a site like this, if we don't have it in our code yet, it's just, I was looking for kind of an approximation of, you know, generally speaking, I think what we're gonna ask for, if you're go, now, this is Airport Road, if you were going through a rural street, I think if this were a permit requirement, one of the permit requirements would be, give us an approximation of how many truck trips you're making. For this one, you're on very easy access to Route Two and One Ninety, and it's on a road that can handle that kinda traffic, I'm not as worried. My point was, and I told you this on the phone, we're gonna start asking that question more and more, so just be prepared for it, that's what we're gonna do.
No, we, it, it's not unusual for us to get into this discussion, it's, it's purely an estimate, because you really, especially in a site like this.
Oh, absolutely.
But at least it's a gauge.
Yep.
And I think that's what you're kinda looking for.
Well, it's a gauge, and then when someone's three or four times that gauge, a year from now, we could say, you know, something's wrong.
Or sixteen years from now.
Exactly. Exactly.
I have a question, this is the southerly entrance, um, there, just the present grade is very high, is that looking to take it down, or are you going alongside it, or?
The, the one to the southeast?
Yes.
That would be cut significantly.
Okay.
Yeah, and so that will basically ends up going in relatively level. Um, we, we also have the client to the right, uh, which is Tango Construction, and we'll probably work with them on trying to figure out what we can do with that area relative to materials. But it is, it is, um, it is achievable, the grades work, uh, but it may not end up being, it may not end up looking like that at the end of the day, um, because of the fact that it may make sense to haul that gravel out and use it on the site.
The, uh, police chief, just so everyone knows, had, had requested that there be, um, flashing beacons at the entrances for cars coming up and down Airport Road, so that's one thing that, that, um, I'm sure the traffic study will address when we get to that point.
Also consider a mark, whatever, a marquee, what location will you be for a sign along the entrance ways in the final plan?
I don't know if we thought about that, but I think we would definitely have signage for, you know, specific, and there would probably be a, a, a sign for the tenants, and then a sign, uh, employee entrance, employee and visitors, and then truck, truck only.
Just saying those, the other things, other things to think about with that, as well as-
Mockup of size, cause we know you don't know the tenant, but maybe what the size is gonna look like, and you can put a num, you know, the address on there or something, as a placeholder until you know who the tenant is. But it'd be helpful to know kinda, like Paula said, where it's gonna go.
Yep.
That way we can make sure, I know it's, you're not gonna make it so it impedes sightlines, but that way we can look at exactly where it's gonna go, so we don't, you know, cause any problems.
And then any, of course, landscaping. Most of it's, I mean, I know the project's mostly to the rear, but anything-
I told Haley that that's one of your favorite words.
Landscaping?
I mean, it's minimal what, what you're gonna be able to do with the site anyway, most of it's off the street, but-
Yeah.
I, I think that we can all agree that the view from Crawford Street Airport Road is gonna be much better when this is done.
I, um-
Maybe.
Yeah, the other thing-
Especially if you don't like the color of the building.
The other thing that I told them, uh, last Thursday, uh, definitive condition, and this kinda goes without saying, but it would be a permit, uh, site plan condition or special permit condition, would be that, site plan, excuse me, no queuing at all on Airport Road of any kind, whether it be passenger vehicles or, or tractor trailer vehicles.
Consider painting the bridge.
Painting the bridge?
Is it the bridge, like, right before, right before the entrance, you take a, the entrance is right on the left, you have to go over the bridge, saying metal.
Isn't that bridge from like nineteen twenty-seven or something like that?
You're talking about the bridge that goes over the river?
Yeah. We'll take a look at the bridge.
No, 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 no.
It's just a metal bridge, it's just the railings.
Stop it, we'll take a look, we'll evaluate the bridge.
Not the, not under the, just like, just as you pass, it's right to the entrance, you'd be taking, you'd go over the bridge and you'd be taking a left right there, right, right to it, so just go like, I don't know. Who are you gonna get to do that?
Um, and then, um-
His minor beautification.
Next meeting about what we talked about, about how we're gonna handle whether it's- Next meeting about what we talked about, about how we're gonna handle whether it's via, that sort of modification.
That's where the sensitivity analysis is gonna come in, we're gonna kinda take a look at that as a, as a starting point. We wanna get you the traffic study for this site as soon as possible.
Yep.
So we don't wanna slow that down, but then between now and the next meeting, we'll start, um, you know, dipping our toes in the water of that one.
Yeah, and that's, and that's probably, huh, we'll, we'll talk more about it, but you and I talked about, that's, that's one thing too, where we, where we're gonna want someone to look at that road, just to make sure that what you show on the plan is, is feasible, given the site conditions we know with this site, not with the unknown site in the middle.
Correct.
Um, and that the placement of this building doesn't impede the potential for that access road for one thirty-five inch of...
And then the option of which way do we, which side do we put it on to, we've, we've talked about that as well.
Yeah, I mean, it, Bill, just cause we're face to face now versus when we talked yesterday or this, or whenever it was, that, what I, what, what Andy and I had suggested, and Chris, Chris saw this, would, this is kinda where you had that road coming in?
A little bit, actually, right along the property line to the left.
Yeah, I, yeah, the, the problem, hold on, I got too many windows over, I can't get over there, but yeah. So it comes in, so it comes in kinda over here somewhere?
Yeah.
Like this, and it goes around this way? The, Andy, Councilman has a suggestion, and I agree with him, was to come this way and basically utilizing the width, you know, you move this loop road over a little bit, and you, you just basically traverse this, this, which is an emergency loop road anyway. Or you keep that loop road and you just bump it up the width that you had of that access. So anyway, that's, you and I talked, I just wanna show you what we talked about.
Oh, and Haley is aware of that too.
Yeah, and I don't know, we talked about, we don't know yet which one's feasible, it just seems like that one's the most possible, the most feasible, that, not for you, but that it ends up getting done versus traversing the whole exterior, the, the, the length of it, but just, just take it into account, and you guys can weigh the pros and cons, how you feel, and then whatever you decide you think is your best suggestion, then we can send it as part of, in, maybe an annex to the traffic study, to Ty and Bond, just to look at it.
I think that we need, and this is something, we're still, we're still kinda talking about this internally, about where does this, this document that we're preparing, where does it go?
I know.
Okay, cause I think technically this document is not part of this project, but I think in conjunction with the other project, it, it makes more sense to attach it to that, but I think we're all at the table now, here's where we discuss it, and we'll go from here.
Yep, and I don't have a problem with that, yep, I just don't want it, yep, you know, I'm not gonna belabor the point, you, you heard me, so...
Does any board members have any, um, just considerations? This is coming back to us. This is definitely continued, there's a lot of work to be done here, so...
And we'll have a lot more data by next month too, as far as what we...
And more opportunity for public comment, but we just wanna have the applicant look into things now, ahead of time, if there's anything else you want to...
Obviously, and I know you know this, and I'm sure you've gathered this so much at this point, it, it, especially with, you know, who you've talked to already, but it's probably best to, to, to get the department head feedback yourself, because we'll request it, but it's always easier if you approach them and say, you know, what, what can we do? Cause they're, they'll, they'll write us a letter, but if you mitigate them ahead of time, then it's, you know, problem solved, and we don't have to worry about it, so...
Absolutely, Joe.
I have a very quick, just curiosity question related to the traffic study. Does it make a difference if there's a singular tenant, or two tenants, multiple tenants, as far as, is that an assumption that your traffic consultant needs to take into account? Because maybe there's more traffic if there's two users in the building versus one?
Yeah, the traffic is typically based upon the size of the building.
So regardless of whether it's all being used by one, or with two different ones, it's an assumption?
If you presume it's one, um, the, the truck traffic might be a little bit, because you, if you have three tenants in there, now you need three offices, so that the warehouse space gets a little bit smaller.
Got it.
So it actually is more conservative to look at it as one u, one user, you know?
And then you're just looking at peak flows of traffic. So it's, you know, is everybody leaving and coming at the same time, are there ships proposed?
Right.
Different businesses, different times.
Okay, you guys good?
Any feedback from the public at this time, this is an open hearing?
Do, do you guys have any questions for the board as a whole?
Um, I don't think so, like, like we said, um, we look forward to a meeting with you guys, and the next meeting, we'll put together a more formal presentation, um, you can learn a little bit more about who GFI is, um, and we'll go into more detail about the, the project, but appreciate you, um, hearing us tonight.
We appreciate you waiting until ten fifty.
It's nice to see you this evening, that you stayed the evening.
It's to be back in person.
Yeah, exactly.
I'd like to request, I'd like to request the continuance to the, to the first item of the agenda of the next meeting.
You and everybody else.
I was gonna say, you'll, you'll get there except there's a couple, a couple continued in front of you.
So, there's a motion...
Yeah, I'll make a motion to continue to our next meeting.
Motion's made to continue.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, could you just confirm for me when the next meeting is?
That's the twenty-fourth, hold on. Twenty-fourth. Yep, May twenty-fourth.
Okay.
It's, it's the fourth Tuesday of every month.
Got it, thank you.
It's not the last.
Yes, of course.
The fourth, cause I did that to my wife.
I know.
My wife already said, what is it, I says, thirty-first, she goes, it can't be, so anyway, it's the twenty-fourth.
Okay, thank you.
So a motion was made. Second. Second to continue, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? All right. Peter's still there, Alex is still there.
Um, we do have, um, we do have two people still on, one of which I know is here for game on.
You're on?
Oh, that was just, and that was just, uh, just an update.
No, I, and I, all I'm saying is, I'm just telling you they're here, I, she probably, Beth, if you have something pressing, you use the raising hand function. But there's nothing new, right, there's, we got the...
The sign, the new sign is coming, I have it on my calendar, I think it's the...
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth, okay.
Okay, the end of this week.
It's the end of this week, it, so his email to me, his email to me two weeks ago was, we couldn't do it this week, it's on schedule for the twenty-eighth. And they can't do it, they have to do it by Wednesday, because it takes like two days, and they don't want it not to be done for a day of an event, so they have to start it like a Tuesday or a Wednesday, so I guess if they don't start it tomorrow, it might be next week, I don't know.
It's always something.
It has been. So...
That's all we have on that.
Thought you could tell, we had a long meeting, my mouse battery died.
Oh, we do have minutes.
Uh, oh, oh, I already reviewed them, I already told you, I'm good with them, I don't know if anyone else...
We can just bring them up real quick.
I didn't notice anything.
I can if I have them, uh, hold on one second.
I have them.
Oh, you can bring them up, perfect.
Okay, hold on, just show me the, um, scare, share the screen thing.
Did I say that, hold on?
Ah. Let me bring up the minutes. And Laura stayed.
Thank you, Mary Jo, for being patient.
I have minutes from February twenty-second, we wanna get these done, so we can get them posted.
Yeah, I might as well, uh, yeah, I, I told you, those are the ones you sent the revise ones, the ones that said PC? Yeah, I already reviewed them, we're good.
So, we do have minutes up for February twenty-second.
You're not sharing your screen though.
Oh, dang it. Thank you. Uh, where is it? It's, oh, too many things over.
I know, I do that too.
Which one is it?
You don't know which window to click.
I'll click on the main screen, right? There we go. Tuesday, February twenty-second, does anybody have any comments on page one?
I have nothing, I already told you, I, I, I looked at them when you sent them over, I think, did a good job, I'm good.
Page two?
Does anyone have any comments or questions about anything in this, these meeting minutes?
Yeah, there's eight pages, so...
Okay, we're good.
All right.
Make a motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Most ammended, second, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, okay? Now we've got minutes from March twenty-second. I sent some comments in.
Yep.
What did I, these are my comments.
Yep, I saw them, make a motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Is there any other further comment from anybody?
No.
Okay, motion's been made with the second as amended, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, all those opposed?
Wait, this is March twenty-second, right?
No, this is, we're on, yes, we are on March.
March, yep.
Twenty-second, so we're all good with that too.
Do you need her to send them to you?
I did.
Did you have the, um, no, you did.
I did send them to him. Let's show him.